Good evening, everyone. I want to do this better. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I really appreciate how everyone got quiet like two minutes before. We have a lot of pressure on me. It's good to see each and every one of you. The Board of Trustees for ALI, the Independent School District is now convened. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who's present. Our mission at ALI by its years to work in collaboration with parents and the community to provide an exemplary education to all students in a safe environment. As ALI Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, adopt policies, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and communicate the district's vision and success to the community. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operation of the district are the responsibilities of the superintendent. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. School board meetings are open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience participation is limited to the pageant presentation portion of the meeting. These proceedings are being taped and video recorded. These proceedings are being taken, video recorded, and all recordings are posted. The archives are available online on ALI ISD District website in accordance with Section 55.128-V-1 of the Texas Open Meeting Act. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. Thank you for taking the time this evening to join us and for your interest in ALI, the Independent School District. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Craig Ipan of Public Relations to introduce a group for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask everyone to stand.
Please welcome the Taylor High School Navy Junior ROTC.
Two, three, four, five, march, left, right, 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 left, right, left, 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 right, right. Art, up, march, left, right, 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 left, right, left, cut it off, go, present, cut us, ready, cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one individual.
Now, for a moment of silence.
Cut it off. Okay, three, cut us, ready, cut, right, face, four, five, march, left, right, 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 left, right, left, 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 right, 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 left, right, left, 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 right, cut it off, go, four, edge, cut us.
How about a here for our Taylor High School Navy ROTC.
At this time, I'll turn the portion of this portion of the meeting over to the superintendent for more recognitions.
Mrs. Williams, Board, this evening, we have a young man we'd like to recognize and pay attention to, and to do that, I'm going to ask the Elsick Ninety-Sixth Center President, Gina Spring. There's Gina. She would love to introduce this young man since he resides on her campus. Gina.
Oh, you've got a nice, large print for you. Thank you. Just going to pay some of the money. I don't want to mess this up. Kelvin Tran, I would point him to come stand up front. Can I do that? Come on, Kelvin, come up here and front. Up here, sorry. I've only known Kelvin for about fourteen weeks, and this kid is phenomenal. There are many people in this room that have known him for a long time, so you're going to understand what I say here. Kelvin recently passed the A+ certification and is now a Comp TIA IT Operations Specialist. And if you're like me, you're like, what does that mean? Basically, he can run our IT department. He holds certifications that could put him in an industry job immediately, making what I make as the principal of Elsick Ninety-Sixth Center. So he's got great things ahead of his life. Last school year, while Kelvin was at, was an eighth grader, student at Holland Middle School, he passed the Comp TIA Network Plus. This certification is vocally recognized and illustrates the ability to work with a variety of hardware, software, and networks. When taken together as the Comp TIA Infrastructure Career Pathway, Comp TIA A+ and Comp TIA Network Plus validates the skills that's needed across IT operations. Kelvin is one of the youngest people in the world to pass these tests. Someone do a slideshow for me. It's above my technical ability. There we go. He can make a lot of money. Right now, Kelvin is set. I can't see that because of the colors of all. But he's down here, I think, in this $120,000 range. Kelvin, are we right?
Yeah.
I think there's one more slide. And this is what people are saying about individuals that hold these types of certifications. They are highly sought after, and he has set himself up for success right now as a fifteen-year-old. He will be highly marketable and is guaranteed whatever job he wants when he starts. I went off script a little bit, but when I was in the audience, someone asked Kelvin, they're like, what led you to certifications? One of my teachers, like, Kelvin, why'd you do that? And I would love for Kelvin to tell the audience why. Yes.
There's a couple of people that I'd like to recognize in here for pushing me on to take a path. Firstly, tech services member, Campus Tech, Kathy Hanson. Also, everyone, every staff member over there that I see from Holland. That's a nice picture of me. There's also the Elsick Ninety-Sixth Center support guy over here. Trying to look for others. My JAMU G teacher. So every person I just named, oh, Mr. Kim, Mr. Kim, sorry for offense. People of the CTE Department that got me into the IT program so I can continue studying for more certifications. I'm currently studying for the Microsoft Certified Solutions Associate, examining Windows Server 2016. So much of an unpleasant. But then, everyone I just named, and everyone in here, I'd just like to say thank you for building a robust and tremendous support system here for me to be able to succeed at doing what I want to do.
All right. Three, one, three, one, Holland.
Yeah.
Come on, Holland.
Any, some of any, and you see, let's do it, why not?
Seems like a bigger space than Holland.
Yeah. Guys, one more, guys, one more. Oh, one more. I forgot one person, Kathy, please. I'm sorry, we have to go on more of this. I'm standing next to you because I've taken those exams and they're not easy. Why aren't you loving the, all this paper?
I'm going to add one more thing I'm signing, Mr. Chambers. I just booted you right out. I want to also say thanks to Mr. Cherry and myself and some CTE folks. Kelvin's also the youngest student in attendance at the Career Center. The only freshman. Congratulations, Kelvin.
Thank you, Kelvin. I am so proud of you. When I heard about those exams, I was thinking, oh, my God. You know, you talk about going Microsoft, too. I know that there are some IT folks in here who are very, very impressed. One of our board members wanted to know what were your college plans? And it came out of my mouth, what college plans? I mean, you already.
I don't think my voice is nearly loud enough to project this far. So I don't really have college plans. I did at one point in time, and then research completely destroyed it. Finding a college that offers a robust information technology degree, as far as I'm aware, is like finding a Neona Haystack, old analogy. A lot of colleges offer computer science degrees. But looking at the curriculum, that's more dealing with the creation side than I'd like to indulge myself in. So I've decided to kind of expand my options a little bit in the search before, I have three years.
Right, well, yeah. That's exactly what we want to see our students have, is options. Thank you so much.
Kevin, no, I didn't feel, I had to make that decision when I went to Lamar.
Talk to Walleye.
You can back run at the ISD.
I think Molly's in the audience, well, yeah, Molly, yes.
Well, he's a little nervous.
Thank you, everyone. That was great. And it's time for Axie Jones to come forward and present this month's donation reports. Don't be quiet, guys, she's talking money. We're ready here.
Good evening, Mr. Chambers. Board of Trustees, donations for November 2018. $3 million, West Paddis L L C, paid by ISD. $30,000, Pitt Foundation, paid by ISD. $25,000, True Clear Global, paid by ISD. $10,000, Martellus Bennett, Mahaney. $10,000, ICI Construction, paid by ISD. $4,825, Fenerve Baker Cafe, paid by ISD. $4,800, Houston Dubay, Backpack Buddy, Smith. $4,758, Houston Dubay, Teacher Aid Program, paid by ISD. $2,500, Morning Donut Shop, paid by ISD. $2,200, Hungry Cow's Pizza, paid by ISD. $1,500, Mr. Johnny Thomas, Elsick ROTC. $1,378.48, Comcast NPC Universal, paid by ISD. $1,253.58, Donuts Choose, Alberg. $1,207.90, TVJ, Hox Sterling Silver Jewelry, Taylor. $1,165.21, Donuts Choose, Crossroads. $1,072.52, Donuts Choose, ALC. $1,000, Adjunct Chinese College Alumni, paid by ISD. $1,000, Mr. Matthew R. Moreno, ICS. $1,000, Texas School Association, Elsic. $1,000, Sickle Field Education, Kilo. $1,000, Angel Network for Policy Service, Elsic. $1,000, AD Committee Association, paid by ISD. $700, Car Problem Management, L L C, paid by ISD. $700, Kerry Friends Incorporated, paid by ISD. $639, Ranos Grocery Store, paid by ISD. $525, Chick-fil-A, paid by ISD. $510, Damas Pizza, paid by ISD. Grant Hole, 3 million, $110,700, $34.69.
Board, I'm going to ask real quick, is there any question concerning the donation report? No question, everyone else?
I have a quick question on that $3 million donation from West Paddis. I know it's a noncash charitable condition, can you explain that?
Thank you. It's not under my consideration.
Let us, Woods, explain that. You're the, you're the.
Board, that is the portion of the transaction to purchase property for the Multi-Burden Center. You would accept that donation. The abraze was generated by the seller and therefore you made the purchase, and this is the other part of it, is to accept that donation.
Yes, that's why I wanted to be sure. I know that in board notes and conversations, we knew that it was coming up, and we just wanted to make sure that it was addressed in this particular meeting. Having said that, I will accept the motion to approve the donation report.
I make a motion that we approve the donation.
It's been moved by Ms. Key and seconded by Dr. Chong. All in favor? It shows seven zero. Thank you. And Ms. Jones, we're ready for the recognition.
Okay, thank you. The CEO, owners of Baron Studios, Todd and Chris Mancheck. Baron Studios was established in 1998. Baron Studios has three recording studios specializing in vocal recording, mixing, and mastering with a multinational diverse team of engineers that represents Hong Kong, South Africa, Nigeria, and Ohio. Baron Studios has supported ALI Idol for the past two years, offering the following incentives to the winners. High school first place winner receives four hours of free recording sessions at $75 an hour. Elementary and intermediate place winners receives two hours for free recording sessions at $75 an hour. Mr. Mancheck's mother, Ms. Cynthia Coronka, is a math teacher at AC's High School. Mr. Todd Mancheck, please come forward. Second, Mrs. Ford, I'd like to recognize and thank will be the Bennett Foundation, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Bennett, for their continued support for the past four years. They have gently donated a semi-truck full of assorted food items, which allowed us to give away 220 Thanksgiving food baskets. With this large donation, we will also be able to give away an additional 200 food baskets for the Christmas holiday. Their son, Martellus, recently donated $10,000 worth of plasma and technology equipment to his former elementary school, Mahaney Elementary. Mr. Bennett's family were also instrumental in supporting ALI's staff and families with gift cards and food during Hurricane Harvey. I would like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Bennett, please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Okay, Board, I confirm that there are no pageant presentations tonight, so with that...
Hi, sorry. We have one final recognition today, and that is for a Gem Award, a Going Extra Mile Award, and that is for Ms. Piana Hurtado, who was a custodial staff member at Holland Middle School. She's being recognized today for her efforts. She was instrumental over the summer as she facilitated the Lutheran Services Organization's access to Holland Middle School as they worked on a verification project at the school. She was also a part of the staff who helped during Hurricane Harvey to save the school from further destruction, so she's a big asset to the community.
So I have to say, you know, Holland is taking my home voice. And you do know I am a friend of Holland, although I saw it when you, Holland, got it. All right. Thank you, everybody. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. Board, we're looking at the consent agenda, item number six. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have removed for discussion?
Yes, I have one. It's 6.11, consider the approval of the contract agreement with Spark to build Spark Parks at Horn and Mahaney Elementary Schools.
Is there any other? Fair enough, other on entertain a motion. Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Moreno. It may have seconded. It's seconded by, thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm trying to not say first name, but thank you. All in favor? It shows seven zero. Ms. Butler, item number 611, recorded in contract.
Yes, so my question is, is for these two schools, so how are they chosen? So how are Spark Parks, or are schools chosen for Spark Parks?
Basically, the Spark Foundation is another nonprofit organization. They have a board that's, each year, they have so many dollars from the foundation that they can allocate towards parks. So they have an elaborate database of public school properties and other public properties that already have parks on them, and they find what they call a spark, or a park desert. It's the farthest place from a park that has a school and does not have another park closer than another school. And so they also pair that together sometimes with city dollars, and the requirement of poverty line exists to also determine which schools could receive the city dollars if they're matching dollars. But in this case, this is just the Spark Foundation, and they work with school districts typically as their main partner. So we have eleven thus far in the district, so this will make thirteen when it's complete. And so we've always been a big supporter of doing that when the offer is available, which you may need work on a property. So they actually work with us. We get an architect to donate pro bono services to do the design. The school raises some funds to kick in. The school district makes in $5,000 per site, and then the Spark Park Foundation produces 150,000 per site. So it's, it's, it's not random, but each time, each year that they have a new park selection, they go through that, where are the biggest park deserts, if you will, and trying to eventually, if you listen to them, have a park on every school campus, elementary school campus in the city, so.
I'm done with my own questions, but I just want to know the process, you know, the training, how to, how to, how to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. I would also state that if you go onto the Spark site, location information, they're same information, so in the future, we'll answer questions like that, be sure to send them off, so that we can get them answered. I appreciate having this discussion because the public gets to see, and we do understand that, but if you go to spark.org, you can find the same details. As a matter of fact, on their site, they list all the school districts in which they are supporting, and also what they expect the school districts to provide as a partnership of these partners.
I don't know, Charles, is this, is this Wayne's heard for her, is she still on the board, the Spark Park Board?
I don't think she is.
The board, the board, the board, not only getting part of that, and obviously didn't hurt us, I believe, as well. She was never shy. All right, I have one thing before we break out a...
I'll need to, uh, approve.
Thank you. Now, we have those questions answered and everything, like, accept a motion to approve. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Butler, second, seconded by Ms. Moreno, all in favor of the Spark Park consideration. Show seven zero, thank you. All right, and Ms. Chambers?
Board, as part of the consent agenda, you recently passed, there were one, two, three, or five administrative positions that were approved as a part of that. I'd like to introduce those individuals if we could. I'd first like to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Quincy Middle Media, Sean Barrow. Sean. In 2003, Sean began his teaching career at Miller Middle Media, where he remained there until 2011. In the fall of 2011, Mr. Barrow decided to pursue an ESL teaching experience in Abu Dhabi. After teaching overseas for two years, Mr. Barrow returned to his teaching position at Miller, and in 2015, he was selected as the Math Specialist at Quincy Middle Media where he's currently serving. So he'll be moving up and serving an administrative role at Quincy. So congratulations, Sean, on the title. So congratulations, Sean, as a fellow student. Do you want to like introduce certain?
Yeah, I got quite a crowd with me. My first is also a math special, so you listen. I have my two kids with me. I have my mom, Susan, my Aunt Judy, my mother-in-law, Sue, another Aunt Toni. I have some friends that came, Dana, Shakila, Sue, Miss Aladra. Of course, my principal, Gordon. And my former two principals who gave me so many leadership opportunities and my friendships who pushed me out of that. But I, so I appreciate everything y'all provided me, especially.
Thank you, congratulations.
I want to say that I, I share a special connection to the Barrows. Absolutely, because I've worked with his wonderful wife before she became Mrs. Barrow, so we go way back. So congratulations, you did wonderful.
Second, I'd like to recommend, uh, introduce the new Assistant Principal at Hastings High School, Mr. Colwin Wands. Mr. Wands honorably served in the United States Army from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-four, at which time he transferred to the Army Reserves where currently he still serves today. After leaving the Army, Mr. Wands worked for several financial and banking organizations while completing his degree. Mr. Wands has graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in psychology in the University of Houston, and entered the alternative certification program to become a teacher. In two thousand and ten, he began teaching in the Houston Math Grade Center where he taught real geography and coached track and basketball. In two thousand and fourteen, he moved to Hastings High School Main Campus to teach economics. During his current tenure at Hastings, Mr. Wands received his Master of Science degree from Lebaron University. So congratulations to you for your new appointed role as a leader of the Hastings High School Board. Any reflections you'd like to make, sir?
All right, be ready, Mom. Y'all know it takes a village, and I saw when Colwin's coming, she's in my personal room, so. With other people, she's here for me and Art, too. Miss Mania, Mr. Cherry, Miss Hope, you know, Miss Miller, Bryce showed up for me there, too. So like I say, y'all, there's a big family around me, and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Like that accent. I'm not making it wrong. Next, I'd like to recommend the new Assistant Principal at Martin Elementary, Mr. Joseph Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez earned his Bachelor of Arts degree at the University of Texas and his Master of Science degree in Educational Leadership at the University of Houston at Clear Lake. In two thousand and eight, Mr. Sanchez began his teaching career in A-8 coming to us as a core member for Teach for America. During Mr. Sanchez's tenure in A-8, he served as a sixth grade teacher, a math specialist at Youngblood, and for the last two years, he has served as the K-sixth math district instructional specialist. I will mention you as a instructional specialist in math, but I know that Martin became a great administrator of the paper, so, so congratulations to you.
So here today with me, my beautiful wife, who also works in the district, Principal at Earn, so y'all. My future boss, and Dr. Shaw, who's in the joint as well. My work mother, since my family is all from El Paso, so they were my work mother, Rhonda. And of course, the little girl, my Aunt Julian, she was supportive as well. And of course, there's many people in the admin building, assuming they're here for me. Thank you, the board, for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
For the next two members, new leadership members of our maintenance and facilities team, first, we'd like to recommend or introduce our new Director of Construction and Facilities and Maintenance Department, Mr. Glen Terry. Mr. Jared began as a project manager in A-8 in two thousand and sixteen, coming to us as the construction administrator of the Houston Community College System. He was in charge of building the garage and the area for the college high school library, a member of the HCC team. Prior to his time with HCC, Mr. Jared worked for large construction firms, so he's got a lot of experience and knows that he's been working in our, in our district for the last couple of years, and he meets all the criteria and we're proud to have him in this leadership role. And with that, I know Glenn must even know that he'll be replacing, oh, where's Pat? I know I saw Pat earlier. Pat, as y'all know, has announced his retirement and shocked that he's here tonight. He's here to support you, Glenn.
So that's why he's sitting on that side.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, Glenn, we look forward to your continued work in our district and the continued support that you provide our, all, all campuses and all districts in the, for you in this new role. And Pat, thank you for your time and your service and being here to this school district. Words against words, I appreciate you. Glenn, thank you very much, and congratulations to you. Do you have anyone here you'd like to recognize?
I have my mother, Maintenance Director, my father, Ernest, and my wife and I. I'm not gonna make him stand up.
And that's certainly not based, Mr. Robert O'Neal is being hired as the Assistant Director of the Maintenance Department. Mr. O'Neal, would you please stay in there a bit? Robert O'Neal has over thirty-five years of construction experience, including fifteen years working in A-8 as a journey electrician, a multi-trasformant, and he currently serves as the district's electrical foreman. Just a little job register. Mr. O'Neal works closely with our Maintenance Director to complete various electrical projects for the entire district. Mr. O'Neal has five years of perfect attendance in this district, and he upholds the willingness to work whenever and wherever he is needed. And that is, if there's ever a true statement, then said that is a true statement. Mr. O'Neal, thank you, congratulations on your new. Want to introduce anyone, or are you good?
My boss here's better.
You better introduce her than your boss. Well, thank you again, and congratulations to you.
Can I ask you one more question?
Absolutely.
Could you design the electrical system that allows us to turn Crump Stadium into a dental clinic in February?
No, I came after that was already built.
I would give you credit.
No, but Jeff's alive, I hear Jeff will take credit for it.
Robert makes money here. This goes to show you that the board members are really watching. Okay, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna take like about a five-minute break for everyone to meet and greet each person, I like to meet your family, Mr. Glenn, your parents back there. So we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene at seven, uh, eleven.
If you have a new position, maybe here in the board or language department, please.
He was a kindergarten.
You all can talk to him.
That's very phenomenal.
I can talk to him.
Not at this stage, but I mean, once my daughter is born, I guess.
Testing one, two, three, testing. Testing one. Testing two. As my wonderful colleague has pointed out to me, I have gone all the time. So thank you guys for reconvening on the seven fifteen. Not so bad. I think it's still, it's kind of the holiday spirit of something that's going around, you know, celebration, right? Okay, at this time, we're going to have item number seven, consider approval of design development plans for construction of a multipurpose center. So Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, board. As you'll recall, we conveyed a few weeks ago that we closed on the property for the multipurpose center, which you granted authorization to make that purchase back in April, and we've been under quite a bit of legalese, working with the seller and other property owners on that property, on that larger parcel of property to make sure that we have the rights to do the things we wanted to do in that building in the future as well as right now, including signage and use of the parking lots and the common areas. And so we're in a good position to get started. Burlington Coat Factory is, Burlington is the lessee, who is currently in property, and they have rights to be in that as a, as a lessee until June of 2019. If you remember on the three hundred and forty-one million dollar bond reference in 2015, we had in that for this project, a twenty-three million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollar allotment, broken across two years, bond sale is coming, well, in April of this last year, we had a five point seven nine million dollar sale, and then in May of nineteen, we sold the remainder of eighteen million, fifty thousand. Of that total amount, we were to purchase the property and do the renovations necessary to fit the programming that was in the bond reference. So the property is ours. Burlington is expected to actually leave and depart that site in January or February because they're moving to the old Gander Mountain at West Iber and Eldridge. And at that point, we can start construction, but as you'll soon learn in this programming phase of, of point for bids and permitting, that we probably won't be able to start construction until late spring, based on the amount of time it takes. So everything's working on timing wise perfectly. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Glenn Jared, the new Director of Construction, to introduce the architects. We're, as y'all know, we've engaged GPD Group as the architect for the design of the multipurpose facility, and with us tonight is Michael Langley, Lauren Evans, and Amanda Pobal. And Michael will begin the PowerPoint for us and walk us through.
And Michael will begin the PowerPoint for us and walk us through it. I want to hit on two key points of the facility, just so you guys are aware of what we're designing. Our current facility gross square footage is 100,000, slightly over, but we're building out 78,000 square feet in the facility and giving 30,000 square feet as growth, grow into the space right now. Because program wise, we only need about 78,000 square feet for the current program. But I'll let Michael finish. Our parking allocation right now is just shy of 500 parking spaces that are dedicated to us. We have an agreement with the other DCs in that facility that if we have a large event, we need to spill over into their parking we can without any harm to us or anything like that. Go ahead, Lauren.
First, I'd like to thank the school board and the superintendent for having us here this evening to present this design for you. And we'd also like to especially thank Mr. Charles Woods, Hilda Rodriguez, Pat DeRondo, and Glenn for all of their contributions, as well as the rest of the district's design team, without whose input this would not be possible this evening. As you know, the, the property, the Burlington property is located at the corner of Westheimer and Highway 6. This is the proposed site plan for the property. One of the things that we're going to do is we wanted to create an entrance plaza into the property. Right now, there's only about a five foot block in front of that property. So we're going to reconfigure that entrance drive to allow for that plaza to be developed. We're also at the upper end, just in front of the main entry, we're going to provide a parking area for presenters to drop off equipment and supplies that they have, especially during implementation, whether that is, be able to get those into the building for further functions. We're also looking to provide information on our key signs along both Westheimer and Highway 6 to show the patrons in the district the things that are happening in this facility. We'll also be restructuring the parking lots, providing new site lighting. And also in the lower left-hand area here is an existing feature of the building, which was a loading dock. And so we decided to leave that loading dock so that the, so that that can be used by the district for purposes they need for that. And then just behind that is where we will be putting in the new chiller yard for the facility. This is the existing elevation of Burlington. And this is our new proposed elevation for, for the new multipurpose center. One of the challenges that we had in this facility is that the design team wanted to provide some transparency into the exhibition space so that people could drive by, could see what's going on, the excitement that was going on in this facility. So, but one of the challenges that we had with that is this building faces too west. So we had a challenge with the sun. So what we've done is, is number one, we've taken out some of the tilt wall panels and replaced those with columns and curtain wall system to provide that transparency. But we've also added this high canopy across the front of the building, as well as the sun shading devices, which will provide protection from that west sun through most of the times of the day. We've also provided for a transparent entrance into the facility in that vestibule. This is the plan for the facility. In the very light yellow is the main entrance vestibule in the facility. It enters underneath the canopies on both sides. From that vestibule, you will, during the day, people will be brought into the reception area with a secured entrance to where they can be checked in, wrapped in, that kind of thing, and be controlled. But during times of, if you have a large assembly, the doors, the main doors can be opened and allow free ingress and out of the facility. The darker yellow area is the main exhibition space. We see this as not only a holding area before large performances, but also as a true exhibition space where you can show student art work and student projects and things like that in that space. And that can become a very active and exciting space. There is a gray and tan are ancillary facilities, restrooms, storage rooms, technology closets, things of that nature. And the purple up above is the main administrative function. Again, as we discussed, that, that lower left area is the reception area where it would be a secure holding area for people entering the building during just normal times of day. That office area also contains several offices and workrooms and things like that for the administration of the building. There's also an information kiosk that's located there so that during functions, there will be somebody there that can direct people as to where they're going between different classes and things of that nature. In the light blue are the, the main training rooms. And as you can see, several of those have been paired together with outdoor walls. So that provides for some, some flexibility in the design so that we can put smaller training areas in the single classrooms, but also we can open up the larger classrooms and provide a larger training facility for those spaces. And then of course, we have the main exhibition hall, which is a little over 10,000 square feet. And that main exhibition hall can be divided into five different rooms. I want to show you some of the configurations that we've got planned for that facility. In this configuration, we've got would be a portable stage at the far end of the, of the room with basically lecture style seating set up. And this seating will be seating for 700 people at a lecture type of situation set up. This one, we've moved a portable stage to the side and provided tables of 10 people in oval tables that will allow seating for 660 in more of a banquet style setup. And then this shows a configuration, if we close off the operable panel walls, and you can see that there's just multiple possibilities of things that can happen in those smaller rooms. And we're also showing where you could have a stage with seating, round tables of 10 people at each table for a banquet of about 260, if you wanted to do a smaller type of banquet facility. But obviously, any of these rooms have our multipurpose, and any of these functions can happen into those areas of different sizes so that it gives a lot of flexibility for users for different size trainings and things like that. The light green areas are the flexible learning areas. And these areas have a multitude of uses. They could be just lounge areas for people that are waiting on a training to begin. They can also serve as breakout areas. A lot of these trainings, we understand, have, they break out teachers into different groups to do group learning and things like that before they, they need to get them to hold. So there's areas that can be used for that as well. In, in the darker green to the lower left is a dining facility, which has a catering kitchen adjacent to it, and also creating a courtyard area there for some outdoor seating. And that area would be, would serve as a dining facility for the district, district for during training areas, people bring their lunch. During the break, they can go there, have lunch. But it can also overflow as an additional training room if that necessi, that need arises. As Glenn talked, the white area to the top is that, is the future growth area that we're looking at right now. And that area, we will air condition it for the rest of the building and, or we can provide ceilings and lights and floor finishes, that, that type of thing, just to, you know, make that area that the district can use for whatever function, you know, should come up until this building needs to be expanded. Couple more of the elevations. This shows on either side of that main entrance that we looked at before, we're proposing to provide some, some cementitious panels that will go over that existing tilt up concrete to dress up that facade. And as you can also see, that we're planning to have the A-leaf District sign on a perforated panel, backlit with the district's signature green color. And then you can also see here the transparency into the, into the main entrance of the facility. And as you can see, back in the back will be the name of the facility, whatever y'all, y'all choose the name of this facility, so that it can be seen through the glass as those people enter, enter that facility. And this is a view of the, that dining area and the outdoor, like outdoor dining area that would be created on the end of the facility. This is the total project budget. We feel at this time that we are within the budget. We feel good about that. And this is our schedule. And if you look at the green line, this is where we are tonight. And so assuming if we get approval of this design tonight, we'll immediately move into construction documents with the goal of opening this facility in June of 2020, just before the major training, teacher training then start in Woodland Dean's building for that 2020 school year. Now opened up for any questions, did y'all have any?
This may be a question for Charles, instead of you, but did the professional development department, were they part of the design team?
Yes, in fact, they were the majority of the design team. We also, we, we remember this facility multipurpose was to encompass the needs of not only professional development, but staff meetings in general from around the district that now are using every spare room like at Trump and that we've created, as well as to provide space to relieve staff members off of campus because while there it's having staff development, they're not in their classrooms, but that they're taking up space in the, in the classrooms that are needed. And then also for, for the elementaries and the middle schools and intermediates to be able to have a place to have a program with the public, with their parents, and not have to break them into multiple nights because there's enough seating and enough parking to accommodate what we expect would come from any one of those schools and one of those type of presentations. And that main, that main room, we didn't really get into the detail, but a lot of talk has been having and is built into this and will continue to make it just as it has been done in other school districts or other facilities like this, where you have these partition walls in that big room, that there are big screens and sound system built out throughout and it automatically configures so that you can, you know, push basically a button and have the, what's going on in the stage go to all of those screens or portion of those screens, or control one smaller room and say, put it together with the neighboring room and the larger room next to that and have it on all those screens and have a hell of a configuration. Anyway, all the combinations thereof, technology wise, so that no matter where you're at in that big room, you're not missing the action. And Board, just to describe that, I don't know if we, I did a good job at the beginning. Typically in this, with new facilities, we go through a schematic design phase, then a design development phase for approval, and then we go out to bid or draw up the documents and bid. In this case, the property acquisition was very elongated, and at the same time, we did stop. So GPD Group's been in with our committee designers of staff, basically, to make sure that we encompass all these ideas, even before we selected this site, we were looking at the other sites prior to this and say, how can we make it work in those sites? And that's how we got to this point of, so this idea of what was needed was defined early on and should have been refined and refined. And the longer we sit, more we're going to refine it. So we've got, now we have the property, we need to get busy and bid it and see what we can get it done for, because every month becomes an increased cost at this point. Well, the good thing about this site is by buying this site and renovating it, we don't have the same requirements of detention, of purpose cover, because we're not really changing the parking lot size or anything like that. We have a shared detention around the back, we own a third of, and we're responsible for maintenance of ongoing, but it's, it's totally, totally maintainable by our staff. And so we have agreements worked out with the other co-owners of the site, the large co-owners of the site, that they're going to continue to maintain it in, in a shared building fashion. So we also have built into it the ability to have construction ongoing while all these other businesses are still trying to operate, that we won't step on their toes either.
Charles, I know, I just have one question. I know when you started talking about the man originally, you was talking about the annex building wasn't kind of overflowing at the annex building, and there was talk about, you know, assistant spaces at that big old open area in the back, of actually moving some of that over, some of the storage and maintenance and, you know, storage area. It looks like the doors are, it looks like they've been one inch, or they're just little small entrances, but nothing like significant enough to pull, like from the loading dock to pull into that space, it looks like the walls. So can you see, did y'all discuss that? Is that something that's on?
We actually, it's kind of hard to see on that plan, but we had to create a forward door out that back area, which goes through that loading dock. But we have overhead building doors that partition that area off. So if you were bringing something into that loading dock, you could move that back through those doors and then bring them back to that central.
I still see the office, is there anything for, that is something that y'all are not using for that?
It's marked as receiving back there.
Receiving storage?
Receiving, yeah. And then there's two little walls north of that, next to that, that receiving storage room, that breaks you into that 30,000 additional square feet. So not only could we have storage back here for things that aren't, we, we need extra space for temporarily or long term, we also have this 30,000 square feet area that can be used as long-term storage as well.
I'm just thinking, as I was doing, Harvey was here, we had, you know, we had Taylor that had all this abundance of supplies and, you know, just both, you know, brought things in. I'm just.
Just me, no problem.
We got some way to, you know, if there was a flow, I'm just trying to think ahead, if there was something, I know we talked about maybe, you know, the early, you know, the career center, you know, having to do big space and doing that, but that may be used for other purposes as well. I'm just trying to think if there's any other entrances, so a whole flow of traffic coming in to drop off of supplies. Is there a way to be?
The site is not designed to do it as a day-to-day warehouse, distribution point warehouse, but for long-term storage, it's, it will remain continuous, it will continue to be, avail itself to be that kind of storage that we're talking about, where you could use pallet jacks and everything and have full pallets, go all the way around to the corner to the, I guess it'd be the northwest corner for storage. And then also expansion, what other districts have done too, is now that's, that's part of the structure, we have mechanical in place, then we can go in for relatively few dollars, and I say this. Maintenance can do a lot. So we could add to this facility in, in this space and subdivide it for all kinds of things. Your mind could go wild as far as daycare to all kinds of things, could operate inside that facility in that extra space once it's ours. It's not free to renovate, but we could. So the funding will be there.
Ms. Moreno, you were saying for annex, but originally, I wanted to add, originally, when the bond was approved and the board was considering spaces, we had board member who suggested, rather than deal from the ground up, to be more conscious about how we would spend the money. So that's why the board at that time agreed that we would find a location. But I think we were thinking about those people for professional developments, where are they all housed now, Ms. Woods?
They're housed here and they are matinee as well because they're usually at remote sites having, wherever they can find their room to schedule over. And so this will be their perch or their home, and they will be the greeters, if you will, of the building and the building operators. So our professional development department, Miss Hope is here. They've been included in all of this and, and given their two cents and more along the way. And I'm proud to say, I think we have their complete blessing on proceeding.
Any other questions? And then other questions, this is for consideration.
Would you approve this, Board? You're not approving it, the contract, which you're approving is saying, okay, go with this design and run with it and create bid documents and go out and bid it, and we'll bring you back the bids in a few months.
Okay, so I get to tell you how I like the design after the, after the vote. I have a motion to approve, to approve the consideration for the design of the multipurpose center. It's been moved by Ms. Keen, do I have seconds?
It's been moved by Ms. Key, do I have a second? It's been moved by Ms. Key and second, uh, Ms. Rowan, all in favor of approving the design. That is a seven zero, so I guess I was not the only one that really liked that design. Thank you so very much for your presentation tonight, thank you.
Thank you, board.
You got something to add, Mr. Chambers?
Sure.
I, I think you're all excited. Uh, I, I think I heard something about, at some point, uh, we may have the staff to come up with some wonderful, unique name, I don't want to be unfair, you know, we don't want to call the building a multipurpose building forever, so, um, I'm just throwing that out there. I didn't even get to talk to the board about that, and I'm just throwing it out there publicly that we need to call it something else other than multipurpose center, although we know that that facility would get lots of use. What I was really appreciative about was the consideration of our elementary campuses, because we know the many events that we go to, and Ms. Butler, you know, when they do the, uh, but it's side by side, you can't get enough people in one facility for that. So, um, we're really excited about, I'm excited about being able to see something like that. My only, um, um, thought is we have to wait till 2020, that's almost two years from now.
I do have a, a question maybe around, I guess, security and I didn't really see, I guess, uh, a room for, you know, my police gonna be there, surveillance, you know, the security of the doors, I just right now, it's a lot of homeless, um, living around there, so I was just wondering how the safety and security of the buildings.
It's, it's already on our police's patrol path and being policed by ALEPD, that whole site, so, um, I am sure that some of the other, uh, property owners in that, uh, parcel are already happy that we're there.
Can I ask one question? I know that you're putting signage on the Westside side and on the Highway 6 side, is that going up first so we can start letting people know what's going on in the district before the building's even ready?
We will have construction signage go up.
But not the marquees?
Not the marquee, it'll be part of the last, because, believe it or not, that's a, is a whole lot more difficult to, to maneuver through construction wise with all the, the joint ownership of that signage, uh, island, if you will, but, but as soon as we can, we will, we'll get it. It will, it will be just as prominent, if not more so than the one that's on the Career Center, multi-sided.
It's a good corner to promote the center.
I would follow to seeing, um, updates, and I know that we've been getting the board knows and things like that, something we kind of be, um, to keep on your mind, we know that the building had to go through some transitions because it was not set for the purpose in which we were established, so we need to, you know, stay abreast on how those things are, are coming forward, because we know that not every building was meant to do the wonderful things that ALE does, but we set a standard.
In that common area, and I don't know where we're going to pass the agenda, but in that common area, part of the design was taking out some steel columns and putting in some stronger steel to support the roof, because these are stores that have columns and don't have a view from this wide audience of 700 people. And so that whole area in the center has no, no columns interrupting it anywhere.
Real quick, Rick, do you, as a reminder, your question about security, obviously once we've launched that building, we have to make security arrangements, we may have done a station somewhere there full time, I don't, I don't know, we might, but as far as the cameras and the surveillance and all that, we just, the rule of business may have to be pushing them. So that's, that's what you answered, but, yeah, your, your points will take it in terms of, that's gonna be.
There's a lot of traffic in that, you have the back doors, the living area, there's a lot of options for, for injury. So is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was kind of thinking about the food, I wanted to know the square footage of the cafeteria area. So I'm like, and we're gonna, we're gonna have those, um, banquet style items there, you know, I wanted to be sure that catering was possible.
It is, it is, there's a food prep area and as well, there is.
The store, but it's right beside you.
But of course, my second office.
Part of the good choice of location is all of the amenities around that area of other restaurants that are nearby for staff to break for lunch, so.
Did you get any input from the nutrition department that may be serving?
We did not, because it's not gonna be a cafeteria side, it would be a buffet, uh, or a, a service of a banquet that's brought in and would be cooked here. We won't have a full functioning cooking kitchen like this school doesn't.
All right, just catering prep and stuff, okay. All right, but thank you so much, we've already approved that, so we're moving on to the next item, thank you. And I think I heard some, um, dogs outside, does that kind of help us segue into safety and security? Can we touch on that now?
Yes, board, thank you. We wanted to take this opportunity, um, last month and it's, um, we've had a number of agenda items, but we wanted to at least touch on some of the things that have been happening this year on safety and security, since this is one of the board priorities, instead of waiting all the way to, till retreat. And so there are a couple of key areas that work is being done, if you remember from a board priorities and some strategies, some was to do with the terminology and making it more consistent across the school district with common sense type of terminology, another was trying to pay attention to the governor's plan as a reaction to Santa Fe, as well as, um, what funds are available and will be coming available to do modifications to buildings. So in a subsequent month's presentation, maybe, maybe December, we actually have some work being done on designing some additional locks and doors within buildings, and we're gonna talk to you about that. But tonight I want to focus and have, uh, Ida Wall, the director of risk management, and Chief Turner kind of go over some of the points that they're covering and have already covered this school year. And so, um, every time we focus on safety, there's a lot of great ideas that come out of it, and a lot of people, vendors, if you will, out there trying to come up with something. And so, um, they're trying to navigate those waters this year and keeping us on track. So, turn over to Ida.
Good evening. I'm just gonna talk briefly about the standard response protocol that we implemented, um, district-wide for all campuses and facilities. Basically like, uh, Mr. Wood said, it was a common language that we're trying to use. Um, we did have, have some safety meetings, um, in June and September, we discussed this and it was part of the governor's action plan as well, uh, to include the standard response protocol. So there's five, uh, different lexicons that they use, that we use for it, it's lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter, and hold. Um, during the, the, uh, governor's action plan, we also talked about having more representation on the safety committee, and so we also included more members and also, uh, Mr. Moreno is, as a board member, is also included in, in the safety, uh, committee. Uh, the I Love You Guys Foundation is, has provided all of these materials for us at no cost, when we also signed an MOU with them. Um, they provided booklets, class posters, and I believe that you received a class poster, uh, just so you can see it, because the PowerPoint's a lot smaller print. Um, and notices to parents, uh, we started the, this acronym that we use as SRP, uh, for standard response protocol, and then the standard, uh, reunification method for implementation for all campuses, um, so that everybody uses the same language, not just the campuses, but also for, um, first responders as well during an emergency. We also, um, hired the, uh, I Love You Guys Foundation to come out and host a half-day training session for all the administrators in the district, um, to help train them so that they could turn around and train their, their staff and students at each campus. If you notice these two signs, one is a lockout, so if something is happening on the outside of the perimeter of the building and there's a lockout that's called, um, let's say the police department calls and says, you know, lock, lockout, means secure the perimeter, there's something happening on the outside of the building, so everybody's coming inside. And also there's a, there's a drilling plate in place for progress, in progress for a lockdown drill. Um, these are the two signs you may see on a, on a school. If you do see those two signs, please just continue to another campus. Um, most of the time, then I'm gonna open the door for you. So if you see these two signs, just move forward with those and go to another campus. Again, these are some of the notices, sorry. Um, the announcements for administrators, um, again, everything in an emergency, they say it twice, lots of lights out of sight, you know, for a lockdown drill, um, if it's a lockout, lockout, secure the perimeter, lockout, secure the perimeter. Again, this is the notices, the one-on-one rights for what the parents should receive or would have received, and then the in an emergency, when you hear it, do it, that's, it's supposed to be in every classroom throughout the district. And we also have it, um, in the offices throughout, uh, the facilities in the district as well. And I'll have, um, Chief Turner come in and give us an update.
Let me ask real quick, you said if I see this notice, so when, when this happens, am I gonna see a notice on a door?
If, if it's a drill.
Okay.
If it's actual thing, no.
You're not gonna see the notice?
No.
It's just gonna be audible, people will know what's going on?
Yes, ma'am, when there's a drill going on, you know, you see that, you know, just go to the next campus or, and then somewhere else. It's just a warning, you know, for, that it's just a drill.
Okay. And this is in Spanish, English language?
Yes, it is in Spanish and English, and I believe they also have it in, um, it's not Vietnamese, it's, it's another language, I can't think right now at the moment, um, but they're, they do have it in three different languages.
First I'd like to, uh, introduce some of our new members of, uh, for the board. Guys, come on up, please. Come on up. Let me introduce, uh, the officers, uh, the new officers were assigned to skills with their, uh, paybacks. To, to my left, first officer is Christopher Sherman, and he handles Tommy, and Officer Sherman is assigned to Taylor High School. Next officer is William Montzier, uh, he's with his dog, uh, Fats, and he's assigned to, past to Elsa High School. We have, uh, Officer Alden Torres, and he's with Dana, and Dana is our patrol dog that's on duty all day. And we have a fourth dog by the name of Edith, and Edith will be assigned to Pasture High School with female handler by the Rebecca Nunez. And Rebecca's in training now and should complete the training, uh, at four weeks, and she'll start at the beginning of the year at Pasture. So, uh, all of these dogs are extremely experienced, they're well-trained. The officers go through a five-week course regardless of their prior experience with dogs, so they can gather with these dogs. Uh, Officer Sherman and Officer Montzier have been on campuses right after the first school year started, and, uh, they've had a relationship on those campuses and what they, they serve and they support, you know. So, uh, all of dogs are vapor dogs, so, uh, I can assure you that there's no illegal anything there like that. Because they look tattered. But, uh, none of the dogs are, they're, uh, none of, none of the dogs are male, uh, they only respond to their handlers' command, and none of those commands are done in English. So no matter who's talking to them or what's going on, they will pay attention to any part of their handlers. Uh, we warn everybody, even though they're friendly and they look good and whatever, if you run upon the officers, the dog takes that as you challenging their handler, and they will respond. Uh, if we have a situation where we need to put a dog on suspect, uh, the officers have a mission to do that, and we're gonna do everything we can with these animals to keep them safe, to keep their lives safe, you know. So they'll invite them in, and they'll only attack them. So they're extremely healthy, they're all young dogs, and, uh, they will be here in the district and work quite well, well on the back. Any questions for the dog handlers?
Dana, you wanna talk just a little bit about the negatives of this, these vapor dogs in the school setting, and, uh, just not the board, or maybe it's not the general community, no?
Well, what, what we have there, we set a trend that Noah's Hill District has participated in as far as, uh, providing, uh, safety dogs on campuses, and, uh, it's a good idea because what it is, it is a immediate deterrent, plus it gives good face to the kids that you don't do, and you can enjoy an education without being concerned about any interest concerns or anything. So we're getting calls from different superintendent's, uh, police chiefs, uh, risk managers in regards to, uh, how do we do this? And my response to that is, personally, it has played by the engagement side. But, uh, it's a, uh, we have a, a lot of folks that's mimicking that, and as long as HIS videos, uh, they only have two dogs, and we have four so far. Yes, yes. Uh, they're talking like this.
Seems like a little robbery going on in there.
Just so you're aware, the dogs do live with their handlers, and, uh, they're, some days a week, 24 hours a day, these dogs become a part of their family. So everywhere dogs go, the handlers are there. And, uh, what we've done is, is that, uh, we had to buy equipment for the dogs, so the dogs were, have a lot of equipment, first of all, we had to buy three D V vehicles to outfit, uh, the animals. Uh, one of the most, uh, safety things that we have to do is, uh, officers' vehicles have to have a backup AC unit inside, so that if there's a problem with the engine or the car went running and the dog's in the, in the vehicle and the trainer or the handler's not there, then, uh, additional unit will, uh, kick on and, uh, make sure that, uh, the dogs don't get overheated. On the campuses, they are assigned to the same office that, uh, the campus officers are assigned to, they have a kennel layer, they have the water bottles, the food, whatever is needed, and they're on those campuses every night. What we do is, I have them working the high school campuses from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, because when a high school's complete and there, everything's clear at 3 o'clock, each one of the officers goes with their fellow school, an elementary school, and immediately go to be on that campus for this mess. So we're randomly going from campus to campus. Officer Alden, uh, a patrol unit, he's on campus every day, he does several campuses a day, he goes down to the bus barn, he does student parking lots, and, uh, any other thing that we can. Uh, a good feature for the dogs is that, not that we have A good feature for the dogs is that, not that we have a lot of bomb scares in the district, but for some reason, through testing, we always get two or three bomb scares. Somebody always says, "Oh, I'm in a bomb incident." Well, these dogs can clear a school inside of Elsie in twenty minutes, no dogs. Completely clear a campus. So there's no discussion about, did you check the trash can? Did you, did you, did you look here? Did you look there? They're vapor dogs. The officers know what to do. When the dogs open the door, I don't know if you've ever felt a breeze when you open the door and it comes out? Well, those dogs standing at the breeze. And they can tell you where anything else in that building immediately. And that's the reason they're vapor dogs.
Chief Turner, what kind of reaction are you getting? I mean, with the governor and all the funding and things that are going on, people are spending their monies all sorts of ways. So what have people told you guys about the direction that you've gone? Has there been any reaction to what you've decided to do?
Yes, everybody thinks that it's great. And my other colleagues wish they could do something. And we like to be frontliners, we want to be the pass drivers. So this is one of the best safety additions that we can add to the mission.
I think I saw a story, was it the news or?
Yes, it was on Channel Two a couple of weeks ago. It was Officer Montzier and his dog, Fats.
So let me ask the officers to answer. I mean, this is kind of new territory, so to speak. So what type of feedback are you getting from colleagues of what it is that you're doing? And how do you distinguish the fact that this is not just canine, this is a different, this is two-point offense?
Yes, ma'am. At my school, Taylor, it's been phenomenally well-received. Initially, obviously, they were a little bit concerned. Oh, they see this big police officer walking to their school one day, and nowhere, you know, here I am with a dog. What I did with the chief captain and sergeant was understand, told them that I introduced myself, told who I am, and my job with the dogs is to protect them, the students and the staff, and make sure nobody goes into the school if they're not supposed to, that could hurt harm or it's got explosives. And to that end, so they've been extremely, I guess I'd say happy that way. And they, at the beginning, they said, "Well, now they're like, okay, we get it. The dogs are great with the kids." I mean, at Taylor, we have three thousand, three thousand kids. So when that bell rings, it's like we're in some space where all the kids and the dogs, because of the selection process that you have, they're training and they're trained for you, all those kids, if you want to combine area, you would think a dog would be like all skittish or not, not at all. So it's been, it's been really, it's been really wonderful, the students and the staff too, the outfit.
And what else?
With maybe in a high school, when I first arrived, everybody sees a big black dog. They were kind of terrified at first. But what I did is, I actually went into each classroom throughout the few days that I was daily visual, and explained to them what the dog was in for. And once they realize it's their safety, they've adapted to the dog. And we've gotten a good outcome with the students in the building also.
Officer Alden, if you go speak, you go that way.
Dana was the one that responded to her.
They've had a long day, so they're ready to go home and eat. But I like to commend these officers for taking these duties on. It's, it's a lot of work. It's like having a two-year-old at home at nine inches. That's the reason I don't have one of those dogs. But they enjoy it, and that's what's important. That's what's.
It's definitely appreciated. Goes without saying, after what happened last spring with the books here locally and Florida, everybody's mind returning, what can we do? And Chief Charles and others, I don't remember, came up with the idea of following the dogs to me, it just made sense to me. You know, if you're trying to protect the exterior of the building from anything bad getting into the building, short of building a wall, this is probably the best thing. Because there's, 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 there's these three individuals, as well as the other, the ladies who are joining us.
Question, I know the officers weren't particularly here. Do the dogs go out when you're out patrolling or anything like that? Is there a protection here?
Well, we have a, yeah, there is, there is a vest. I'm telling the officers, there, there is a vest for dogs.
Do they have one? Do they wear, I mean, is that something that they tell? I know it's hot and it's heavy.
We haven't purchased them yet, but we're working on that. And when we do, when we have a situation, the officers will dress the dogs out, and you will know who they are. They have a probably different uniform, just like the officers do.
I see one more thing to go on.
Yes, sir.
One thing that I retired from HPD like our chief, one thing that I learned on crime coverage, search party in the state of Texas, and the best deterrent for crime is a dog. And so even this little chihuahua, it's practically known, dogs are the best deterrent. So the same philosophy that we have here with the dogs as a deterrent, whether it's during school, after school, kids are gonna come fight, can't seem to come fight, you think the kids may be, first thing, if they're gonna see a dog on a campus, and they have to think twice about coming in, that's the last, much longer than they will be now. So then when they see the dog, yeah, it's a story, it's a great deterrent. So for you guys, based on the community, just one thing I'd like to say.
Yeah, I, I was kind of thinking that the dogs are more acceptable than having the scanning machines that most people want to pull out and, you know, that, you know, it looks like safety, but that's not safety, not, not to the extent of the effort that's being put in place.
One dog in each building that's worth five additional officers on the campus.
I understand that Officer Sherman's dog also saves dogs.
Officer Sherman do a lot of things. But he's a good officer.
Well, thank you guys, so very much. Thank you, thank you to all of our partners here.
We're not gonna have a dog fight here, so we don't need to go in that. All of these paths are, paths are made.
I had to keep slipping on you back. You don't stop.
I'm looking at these guys, got a lot of muscle to have to handle. Lot of energy. Thank you, Chief, for.
Well, I got a couple more things, just real simply, because the dogs are the only deterrent that we have. And what I did was, is that Charles and I had a meeting, and we look at safety for the entire district like we do all the time. So what I did was, is that I've reallocated some police officer positions so that we can provide better coverage on campuses and around the district. As you say, we purchased three new V hippos. And with that, that coupled with three vehicles, equipment, and Charles is looking at an area so we can have the dogs' own training facilities, so that we don't have to go other places to have the dogs trained. To make sure that the dogs and the officers are getting the correct training that they need, and nobody is straying where. We hired a certified training company twice a month to work with the officers and their dogs. So that will keep them sharp and in addition to rate that could come about, that training can catch it and get everything back on point. I assigned a full-time officer to Career Center, that's a real large facility, and we needed a police officer in there. Also assigned an officer to the A Leaf College, because HCC blew all of the officers off campus. They now respond from a patrol situation. You call them, they respond. So we put a full-time Alif officer at the A Leaf College, so that we have immediate protection on that area at all times. I've sent a police officer to Parker Lot at Elsie, Haste, and Taylor. We have a lot of vehicle traffic that comes through those areas, and those are large parking lots, and only we can secure our lots and make sure that they're safe, is to put a police officer there. I also have three parking lot monitors. We put those at Elsie, Haste, and Taylor. And they're just additional eyes for the campus and for the police officers. All of those areas, we purchased plum cars so that the officers and the parking lot attendant would have a vehicle to be able to get around in. And they can use those vehicles to get rid of weather at the same time. We wrote grants, and we received forty-six ballistic vests for all our police officers. And those vests also came with the high, what do you call it here?
Velocity. High velocity.
So that was a good feature that was a part of a governor's grant. We also purchased metal hand wand, metal detectors for all the elementary and intermediate campuses, so that if they believe or need, there's some new technology for safety that can work in there.
So I guess that, Chief, is why, we always want.
And we didn't speak here.
Hey, I'm kind of curious with the grants. Who took on the responsibility of submitting your grants? Did it come out of your department or?
Yes, the grant, the grant, Polycastler's employees, along with Captain Mountmore, took care of the grants. So.
And you said you took advantage of the governor's grants, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am.
The metal detector wands, did it require some training of the employees on those particular campuses, or it's just administrative use?
It's administrative use, but that was a procedure written on when, how, and where to use the wands. And we did do a little skip to train everybody on how to use the wands.
And one other question?
For, I know at the, at the games in the stadium, usually I just see the wands. Is there any idea to maybe have, or maybe I missed the dogs there?
Well, the dogs are there. It's just we don't put them on the gate. We put them in strategic places. So we don't scare everybody that shows up. There's a lot of people just don't care for dogs at our, and we want them to go in the game and have a good time. But once they're out in the crowd, they're in the parking lot, and once the game gets started, then they come up to the gate, and they walk around. But with these dogs being new, we did use them at a lot of games this year. We were still trying to break them in on campuses versus a large facility like the stadium. But it is our intention that at every large event, we will have at least two of those dogs at every event.
Wait, I have a question about, I know you're talking about weapons, bombs, you know, drugs of some sort. What's the distance from a dog can smell from, you know, in an emergency? I'm not sure if you really, if you really want to pass it on, is that, is that a pretty good distance? I mean, like in a, in a game, a stadium, you know, you'd be right up on the person.
Well, it's, it's like, if you're a non-smoker and somebody lights a cigarette, it's in the air. We can all smell it when we're not smoking, or if you're smoking, and those vapor dogs are the same way. It'll be in the air, and they will pick up on it halfway across the stadium, Mr. Murray Dog. And they will eventually find it.
So that, that, the, the firm that we've got the dogs from, they, they use those breeds. So they're not German Shepherds, they're Malinois. And, and they have a different sensitivity in the nose, and it's thousands and thousands times stronger than, than a human. And so what, what also, what he said earlier, where he signs them to campuses, they know the smells, everybody that's building after a couple of days, they know what's up different. So, and they've already proven that, so they, they don't have to, to know exactly how far away it is. They pick it up, because as he said, that air gets pulled in by the air handlers, and so immediately entering the building, it's now in the building. So it's, got a couple of good things going for us from the standpoint that they're stationed at that facility, they get to know the smells, and if people come back.
One, one example, if you have a concealed handgun license, and you show up at a campus where you secure your weapon and your vehicle, if you come into the campus, and the dog is gonna pick up on that, simply because of residue that you have on your body. And it will be the same thing with drugs. Somebody showed up and they had some hydrocodone, and the dog wanted it. So right away, he was all over it, just like, "I need your hydrocodone, I know you have some." So they're good, they're good at what they do. They're, they're real good at what they do. Thank you all for what you did.
Thank you, thank you for that extra, extra stuff. Appreciate it. Okay, with all of that wonderful talk on safety.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, board. Well, tonight, we want to just provide the board, we know that you guys have visited the Center for Advanced Careers many times, but we wanted to kind of just give you an update on all of the great things that have been happening so far since we opened the Center for Advanced Careers. And tonight, I'm gonna have Samson Kim, who is our dean for the Center for Advanced Careers, come up and visit with you. I know that you guys have an opportunity to, you know, see Kim and Jennifer quite a bit, but we wanted to have Samson come up and share this presentation with you. But I also want you to know, they work together as a trio. They are a team. So Samson is here speaking tonight, but they're all together on this. So Samson.
Good evening. So I have to follow Dr. Chief Turner and the dogs, huh? Okay, here we go. So first off, I do want to say thank you, board members, Mr. Superintendent, for giving us the opportunity to work in such a fabulous building. So what I would like to do is pretty much showcase what we've been doing for the first semester. So before the center was even built, Crowe had a pretty, pretty funny line where, "Why are we building this building in the first place? What is the, what's the purpose?" Well, I mean, strictly, you know, if you build it, they will come. We have students here that are ready to get some career choices, and they're gonna get those at, at the center. So after the construction, and after the build of the building, when we did build it, they did come. And this is a small snapshot of the first day of school. So as you can see, these are the students that are coming in on the first day. Oops. Calvin went home. I, I wish I could really show you the excitement and the awe in the students' faces, but it was just phenomenal. It was, it was an incredible first day. So after that first day, obviously, after we got off the shine of the building, we had to get to work. Our directors, Miss Jennifer Baker and Miss Timberly Crowe, have worked tirelessly to garner business and community partnerships throughout Alif in Texas. And these are just a small list of some of the companies that have allocated resources towards the building and our programs. I also have to mention that our staffing, we have twenty-three full-time certified teachers. Out of those twenty-three, twenty-two have previous industry experience, which is valuable in the classroom, and to show the students what their future's gonna look like when they get out of high school. So a little, a few program updates. So a little, a few program updates. Basically, we're getting everything ready for the spring semester. Um, and these are just a few of the updates that we have going on this semester. Uh, digital design, Mr. Getch and his, uh, his crew of students are already creating, um, creating products for, uh, you know, various, uh, community members around, around Houston and A-leaf, uh, insurance agents and so forth. And they're already creating advertisements for their clients. Uh, automotive and culinary arts, we're going to be opening up the, the shop and the bistro, uh, hopefully in the spring semester. And that's going to be in addition to what happens in the classroom. So they're going to be learning, but also getting some industry working experience as well. Veterinary sciences, actually, they're already open. So they started, uh, giving out the grooming services yesterday. Uh, we're going to have community members, right now it's mostly teachers and, and staff members. But, uh, we're going to have community members, uh, make appointments, bring their pets in so that they can get groomed, clipped, so on and so forth. So just like Kelvin, I did want to go over just a few of the certifications that our students can, uh, receive at the, at the center. Out of all of these programs, these certifications are integral for our students because it gives them the choices of, of things to do after high school. They can not only take these certifications and run with it in post-secondary, uh, uh, college or post-secondary education. They can also receive jobs right out of high school and get a living wage so that they can take care of their families. And this is just another way to give our students choices, uh, in their future careers. As you can see, I think Kelvin has all of those, uh, information. So currently, uh, we have a little over a thousand students from all three home campuses. So basically what we're saying is on a daily basis, over one thousand students are shuttled to the center every day. Every period, actually. Um, and those students are going for double lock periods and they're shuttled back to their home campuses. So it's a, logistically, it's nuts, but thankfully, thankfully with the transportation, Hilda, Mr. Torres, um, they, they made it seamless. Uh, it, it's just been a phenomenal team effort, uh, for everybody involved. So we had a few, uh, events over, uh, at the center, uh, for the semester. We had our community open house. We had the ribbon cutting, which many of you were there already. We had the Finder Future Expo, the A-leaf STEM Challenge, where students actually built little wind turbines. And we generated, or we measured the energy that was generated from those turbines. And then we gave them the awards at the Sitco STEM Night, uh, twenty eighteen. And that was a, a huge success. One of the bigger endeavors that the, the center is doing is, is called J-A-B-Z-Town. And I'd like to show you a little video on how much work it takes to, to get something this big into operation. So far, this semester, we've had over fourteen hundred students come and go, uh, for BizTown. We've had over almost three hundred volunteers. And this is, this little video is just a little time lapse of how much work that actually goes into. It's not working. Okay, well, so the visit, video would have shown how much work it would act, actually went into a building. We have a little town in the middle of our center. Um, it also showed that the students coming in and a time lapse, the video of them actually working. And the students, uh, being CEOs, bankers, um, and so forth. And they get a little glimpse of what it means to be an adult. And then at the end, we ask them to, to write what they learned on our big whiteboard. And, uh, funny enough, most of the messages are, uh, being an adult is hard and I want to stay a kid for a long time. So I think we've done our duty, uh, in regards to that situation. Um, in addition to all of these, uh, events and the daily operations of the building, um, Ms. Baker, Ms. Crowe have done over, completed over thirty-five tours for community members all across of Texas. We've had over sixty meetings, uh, held at the center. And that's in between the times that we have classes. So something is always going on, on a daily basis. And there's a, there's a lot of people coming in, community members, uh, district, district administrators. It's just a phenomenal place to come and gather. And, um, everybody's face is just in awe once they, once they enter the building. Before I, before I, and I would like to say thank you to a few people, um, many of which are actually here. So again, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Torres and the transportation team, thank you for your help because we had a small little hiccup at the beginning of the, of the year. But that was fixed really quickly and seamlessly. It was, and then logistically, like I said, I don't even want to think about it right now. But, uh, it was, it was a, a big undertaking. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Wally Rixstraw from the tech team, uh, for your phenomenal work. Um, without you guys, the, the building wouldn't turn on, pretty much. So Adam Tabor in the purchasing department, um, Heather Hayes Ramirez, a nutrition, uh, Pat DeRondo, Glenn Jarrett, Jeff Delisle, Wilton Curry. Without you guys, there would be no building. And of course, the CTE program, all the program managers, but of course, the two directors, um, you know, Ms. Baker, Ms. Crowe. Uh, we have a phenomenal team at the, at the center. And I just, I truly enjoy coming to work every day. So thank you very much. Are there any questions?
That's two questions.
Sure.
One is if you can read that video, is it, I'd like to see that video. If you can, um.
I'd like to see the video as well.
No, please, has a link to our board.
I can, I can send that out to you guys.
I think Samson was at the BizTown video.
Yes, it was.
Can we, can we send Craig or someone out there to do some? Yeah, I want to, I want to, I thought about that today, that day. It's phenomenal. If you have a chance to go back.
It is on, it is on YouTube as well.
Plus, plus the BizTown and the hard BizTown report that we have worked too, so.
And we're going to have a video on like what you're talking about.
Yeah, we just want to give you like a little taste, but the, uh, the full-time presentation will be.
Can we, can we call Kelvin here, maybe he can fix?
Yeah.
Kelvin at home, uh, just started a second job.
So when is, when is BizTown being this, like, this assembly? When is that?
Well, BizTown comes, uh, I'm sorry. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday of every week. And we're having that until January.
January seventeenth is our last day.
Well, January seventeenth is last day. So I can count December the fourteenth, right?
If it's not a Wednesday, it's a Friday. Yes, okay.
What times are that?
They're there from nine-thirty to about one-thirty.
Okay.
I'll come in because I visited when Owens was in the building and I saw a police officer ticket one of the teachers for eating food.
Yes.
And a non-restricted area.
I don't want to say nothing, but I did get a speeding ticket down the hallway, which I will take care of next week.
So, so also to add to that, uh, board, the, the, I guess it's the CFO of Junior achievement contacted me and, you know, early on, we were in planning phases of how to make this work. And really, it hasn't been put out there in exactly this configuration, this way. And it just worked out phenomenal and, and we expressed our appreciation for them and, and they did as well. And they're using it as a showcase too now. So I think we, for future buildings, we may start, uh, a, something to be replicated elsewhere for their own fifth and sixth graders.
Last question I have, um, is on the, um, the veterinary services. How do you sign up? Is there a?
We are working on a link to a website. So if you go to the Center for, uh, Advanced Careers, we're going to have a little appointment generator. So you can see the, uh, the actual schedule and see when there is availability. And, uh, that way you can sign up for an appointment.
I think A.G. and I can go go in for a trip.
Those will be, uh, yeah, they'll tie dollars them.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's exciting to hear the different uses of the, of the facility and, and just hearing the excitement of the students. It's, it's, I know that you guys just don't get tired of hearing that, you know?
No, that's the best part.
And I also wanted to say thank you because I know you made a tour to leadership group that came to your building. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, that tour kind of ran a little long, I apologize.
Thank you.
I, I know either one of you, it will happen, I, you know, you just can't get enough talking about that building. And that is, that's a great thing.
Kim, have, have there been districts from California come out and see it? And today, active interest for this town?
Arkansas.
Arkansas and there's the districts.
We're from Victoria's coming, before Christmas, my righteous one.
One of the things, and we haven't talked about this, but this is serious, but this is getting, this building is getting, obviously, a lot of conversation. People want to see it. We're going to have to establish some of the scheduling and somehow manage that so that they can do their job and not spend half a day. We're touring, so.
Absolutely.
But it's, we kind of need this going.
Yeah.
It will get a lot. It'll be.
I did give a tour too. All right.
Oh, yeah, that's right. The little, the little tour.
Yeah, so I'll give the tour guide.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. McGowan?
Okay, good evening once again. Um, well, while they're getting that up, uh, tonight, really, we just want to provide the board with an update on the work and the charges surrounding the full-day, uh, pre-K task force and all the possibilities, uh, when it comes to offering full-day to eligible students. So what I want to reiterate really is, everything discussed tonight really is simply just possibilities. These are thoughts. We don't have anything that is completely solid at this point, but we did want to update the board and share a few things with you. So, um, as you know, A-leaf has been having the conversation, uh, surrounding full-day pre-K, uh, for a number of years. It's been our goal, uh, to be able to offer that. And so when Mr. Chambers, you know, asked us to develop this task force, you know, he gave us the charge in the committee. He said, I want you guys to really research and identify all possibilities under the current Texas law regarding the funding structures for A-leaf to offer full-day to, to the students. And so, um, you know, for years, we've been waiting around on the state to come through with the funding and the money. But we just realized we can't wait anymore. We've got to look at this ourselves and try to figure out what we're going to do. So while we're hopeful, uh, that the eighty-sixth legislative session will actually be productive and there will be some additional funding and things like that, um, we're, we're just not going to wait anymore. So, um, I want to share with you a little bit about some of the work that the pre-K task force and the subcommittees have done. Um, we've had a lot of very rich conversations. And through those very rich conversations, we've had some ideas that really have come to the forefront. So Deanna is going to discuss some of the specifics on the ideas and the possibilities, um, shortly. So one of the things that I do want to address is why? Why full-day pre-K? I think that those of us, uh, the board and the rest of us sitting in this room understand uh, why it is critical and important to offer full-day pre-K. I'm going to tell you, I can, our A-leaf Early Childhood Team will let you know that really time matters. You know, extending that day provides us an opportunity to, you know, have our teachers spend more time working through all of those foundational domains that are necessary to get students where they need to be. You know, our goal really is to have our students kindergarten-ready, having, uh, reading level, level five, third grade. We know that extending that day will help us build a stronger foundation. Uh, there's a lot of research out there on, uh, you know, all the aspects of high-quality, uh, pre-K. And I think about four years ago, Pailo DNA presentation, uh, when it was, I think, I remember this bond committee. And, you know, right there, there were several options, there were three options that were on her, her list of things that we really could do and consider. And one of those things was to extend, uh, and create a full-day. So the charges, uh, of the task force, um, we had several charges. Uh, number one, research and identify existing barriers. But don't let that stop us because the next charge was to then research and identify possible solutions. Uh, in addition to that, we were asked to identify choices, options and decision points necessary in order to make this happen. Um, so our end goal will be to provide the board with a report. Tonight really is just an update, but we are working towards being able to give the board a report of some specific options. Our sub, we had, um, four subcommittees, um, with the task force. And there's a couple of things that I really wanted to just highlight, uh, that were really very enlightening. Uh, one was, uh, our, our site visits. Uh, some members of our task force had an opportunity to do some site visits to two districts that currently have full-day, um, Alden, ISD and Spring Branch. And so although we noticed in visiting the districts, I didn't have an opportunity. But team members who did have an opportunity to go on those site visits, they recognized that although they do things just a little bit differently. You know, maybe the way they staff, the length of the jet, the full-day may be different. The one thing that they said, that they all believed was that extending that day makes an impact. We're going to see better outcomes and the research again supports that. We are currently, uh, the task force has been talking about creating, um, and having a survey. I think it was the Friday before we left for Thanksgiving, we met with, um, a company, I think it was Decisive Campaigns, to talk about, um, you know, a survey. The, the task force felt like, you know, this is something that we really need to do. We need to know what our community is thinking. And the big questions that we really need to ask ourselves is, if we build it, will they come? We need to know that before we, you know, just dive in. So without further ado, I'm going to have Deanna, she wants to talk a little bit about, uh, some of the ideas and the possibilities uh, that have come up through those discussions.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to backtrack just slightly and review what A-leaf is currently offering for pre-K. A half-day program offered at every elementary campus, monolingual and bilingual programs at most campuses. Some campuses are monolingual only. Um, and the pre-K, pre-K half-day program serves eligible students. The primary criteria for eligibility is economically disadvantaged or limited English. So for that half-day program that we currently offer, we do receive half-day ADA funding from the state. They'll only provide the funding for eligible students and they do not provide funding for a full-day program. Our actual pre-K enrollment, um, for this current year is at about twenty-one hundred students. When we staff for pre-K, we look at a student-to-teacher ratio of twenty-two to one and then add additional paraprofessionals to the campus, um, specifically designated to serve the pre-K classrooms to bring that total adult-child ratio down to eleven to one. We currently have sixty-three pre-K teachers and thirty-seven pre-K aides spread throughout the district. Um, one of the, um, wow, I can't think of the right word. One of the criteria or, uh, measure points that districts use to evaluate participation in pre-K is looking at pre-K first as a percentage of the total first-grade enrollment. First grade being first mandatory grade for a leading school. For the sixteen-seventeen year, A-leaf was at fifty-eight percent of our students. Then more recently, TDA has developed a website that kind of tries to break it down further and show the pre-K enrollment as a percent of first graders who are eligible for a pre-K program. So that's trying to get at, um, of the students that would qualify for pre-K that are currently in first grade, how does your pre-K enrollment compare to that? So it's a slight uptick showing sixty-three percent of eligible first graders are in pre-K program in A-leaf. Um, so that shows obviously a large underserved population of, of four-year-olds that are not attending, um, daycare or pre-K in A-leaf. So what we are hoping, and we discussed a lot with the task force, is, um, finding out information through the survey and then also potentially through some other means as to why students aren't participating in our pre-K program. Knowing that the fact that it's a half-day program is one of those barriers. So we also pulled data from the TDA site on neighboring districts. And you can see that, um, this is a lot of districts within the Houston area. Most Region Four districts are up here and then what, as well as some districts that are outside, um, the Region Four area. Again, we're comparing in the first column, pre-K enrollment to eligible first-grade enrollment and showing that percentage. And A-leaf is kind of in the middle of the pack, um, especially considering the differences in programming options offered at many of these districts. So, uh, one thing you can see is there are a lot of districts a hundred percent half-day. And there are many districts that have already moved to a hundred percent full-day. Alden and Spring Branch, the ones we visited, um, being included on that. Alden and Spring Branch, the ones we visited, being included on that list. There are also quite a few districts that are offering both half-day and full-day pre-K programs. Pasadena is a good example of their 23, 64 pre-K students, 48% of those are attending a full-day program, 52% are attending a half-day program. So there are a variety of options as districts are moving in the direction of full day. You can see Clear Creek has just kind of dipped into full day with 10% of their students enrolled in a full-day program, 90% enrolled in half-day, and the various percentages for other districts. There's also a pretty wide variation of pre-K enrollment within ALEAF. Currently, our campuses range from about 35% at Outley, that's our lowest participation rate right now, to 78% of Chancellor, being our highest. We can't see a direct correlation with either the percentage of Ecodis or ELL students on those campuses, so we're continuing to research some of the factors that would cause these differences within our own district. We're currently estimating that if we switch to a full-day program district-wide, not that we could do that right away, but we would gain at least 465 additional students. So that would bring us to an overall 75% of our first grade enrollment, which is fairly consistent with Alding is currently at 78%. So we kind of use that as our target because we'll need to plan for states and staffing and programming, not just for serving the students we currently have in a full-day program, but also for an expansion of students that would start attending. We also started looking at capacity of our current existing campuses, and what this chart shows in the first column is the current classroom count, the current number of teachers on that campus, the current dedicated classrooms that are being used by our special education department. So showing in that second to the last column, how many classrooms are currently not being used at various campuses. So that created a lot of discussion internally among district staff as well as with the task force. If we have available space already at some of our campuses, would we consider kind of stepping into full-day pre-K as early as the 1920 school year? So what we have been discussing is a possible pilot program beginning in 1920, and timing is kind of critical for this as far as the planning that needs to go into it if we were to proceed with this pilot program. We have identified some, on a very preliminary basis, campuses that currently have capacity just by using the chart here showing where we have empty classrooms throughout the district that could be used for this purpose. We have discussed offering a full-day program to eligible students known to those campuses based on space availability. We could allow some transfers, as we currently do with our half-day program, from other neighboring campuses into those. We have to keep in mind cost factors also, though, in that we would consider offering enough space on those pilot campuses to serve their current students for a full day as well as an anticipated increase in the population that would come. The other barrier to full-day pre-K in addition to space, and you know, we have money in the bond referendum, so once we go district-wide with that, the other barrier would be funding a pilot program as early as 1920. We will not know revenue estimates for our general fund for 1920 with the legislature in session until at least May. So the first thought kind of was, well, there's no way that we can wait until May and then decide, okay, the legislature has made funding available, we could continue with this pilot. So we started discussions with Carla Kessler, who's also on the pre-K task force, about the possibility of funding a pilot through the title programs. It would be an allowable expenditure out of our Title I or Title II funds. We receive about $25 million in total in those title programs, allocating a small amount of that, $600,000 to $800,000 for the staffing and other costs that would be associated with moving forth with the pilot. And then one other thing we looked at in identifying sites for a pilot program is making sure that we're offering these sites throughout the district. We're hoping from this initial pilot that we would, in addition to beginning to offering a full-day program sooner for children, we would also be able to gain some information about how our enrollment could potentially increase once we went to full-day. Programming decisions can be worked out on a smaller scale versus full-scale district-wide implementation of the program. So they are, these preliminary sites are located throughout the district, neighboring elementary campuses that could potentially send some students, a few students, if there is space available, are identified below that. So this is kind of where we are right now on discussing a pilot program. We would want to move fairly quickly on getting the planning done for this, so we wanted to bring it to the board as soon as possible, really sooner than we were really ready to bring it to the board, but we wanted to bring it for this sudden discussion tonight to see if there is interest in pursuing the pilot option and what questions the board would have in preparing for that.
I'm still on the committee, and I appreciate the invitation. And the committee is made up of teachers, staff members, community members, nonprofits. We even have a pre-K liaison with TDA that comes to those meetings. So it's a very wide group of people, so lots of good, great brain power going in there. And I sit on the policy and advocacy subcommittee, but some of the things I noticed is that, okay, everything's on the table. There is nothing that is forbidden to ask about or say, you know, is that a possibility? It's like, let's talk about it. Those other decisions can come down the road as we refine what's going to happen. It's very transparent, everybody has a voice. No one, I haven't noticed anyone feeling restrained about commenting in the meetings about how they feel. And they ask really hard questions, these people that are part of education but also supporting education from other agencies. The state legislature funding, like you said, is not gonna happen in a timely manner, and so we're gonna have to ask some hard questions internally and other, that y'all will do ways to support it financially upfront. But we're gonna have to look at, are there programs that need to go away that don't give us the bang for the buck that we're looking for and promoting? And then possibly even have a road which is, nobody here has wrote stuff that is a tax rate increase, as a possibility, and asking those questions. Another thing that, okay, that's six months away to be ready to open pre-K center pilots at all these different schools. So that's curriculum development, hiring, training, all kinds of things. So one of my big concerns would be is that two people can't do all that. So they may need some extra support in getting that off the ground and funding. Also think, though, that having a pilot program will give us the opportunity to create excellence in the program that if our legislature decides to fund it, or we come up with another way to fund it across the whole district, gorgeous step ahead. We can, we can take what they've learned from those pilot programs and replicate it at other campuses and let it spread across the district as a program.
That we can gauge the community response to the program as well as, we have, of course, had lots of discussions with instruction about is this even feasible to consider talking about? And, you know, we're getting a thumbs up from those members on the committee that this is something they've already given a lot of thought to, have spent a lot of the time thinking about the programming aspect with expanding the full day. And we had great discussion at the meeting this morning of the task force about some of those options and some of the other considerations as we consider piloting or even full-line implementation.
And everything that's been discussed has been supported by research in that, you correct, of what's going on. And experts from the financial area is, what is it going to cost us and what is this model cost us? And what kind of curriculum do we want to implement? Lots of voices give blocks of input on every area that is being touched, and it's a good process. Anyone else have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say how, how excited I am that we have, that this task force has gotten together and did this tough work. Because we all know, wait on the legislature to do something, you could be waiting for years. And to step out there and say, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna make it happen. I think that takes courage, I think that takes boldness, and I think that speaks a lot for ALEAF. I think that the pilot is an excellent idea to kind of get out, that you can kind of get your feet wet first, figure out what's, what's going to work, and tweak the program. And I'm sure that you're gonna do some kind of tracking or research on this pilot before it, you know, it spreads out to district-wide or whatever. And I truly feel that it will also benefit other districts who are considering to do the same thing. So I'm very excited about it, and I look forward to hearing how this, this actually grows. So I just want to say thank you all so much for this work that you're doing.
I'd make a comment as well. I'm glad as we move these projects and programs, they're getting more word of all of them, and I appreciate the comments, Jennifer, that you made. Very detailed. I felt like I'm in the meeting, you know, by listening to what you're telling us. So I don't feel like I'm left out as a, as a fellow board member, so I appreciate you passing that information on to us as well. And in the last few months, you always have been hearing me, what are we doing different? What are we doing different now than we have before? These are our elementary classes, our schools, we're having problems. Can't do the same old, same old. It's gotta be different. And we know the facts proven, we've had discussions with HDE for years, that you gotta get these kids early, you know? Third grade, I mean, three-year-old, four-year-old, you know, get them early so that they can try to be that third grade, you know, that level to do this. And this is something we have to do. You know, it's not a matter of it's an option, it's just the right thing to do. I did have concern about one of the campuses being a potential IR without the waiver and so forth, but I'm reassured in giving our trust into our superintendent and his staff, and then the right choice to do it. And when the campuses spread out that way, that was important, I was like, I didn't see a map where they were, and the next slide, he put it up, it was a breakdown of that. So I very appreciative of the work and the thought in keeping this in tune. This is our whole focus and office, you know? And with this current board, you know, we've had good work in the past, but I think this is becoming great work in working together and looking for the vision of the district as a whole.
And with the pilot program at each of these campuses, we're looking at the number of pre-K classrooms they currently have and doubling that and allowing for a little expansion. So we're not talking about adding, you know, 20 full-day pre-K classrooms at any one campus. So I feel like it will be a fairly manageable chunk as we begin moving forward. So I think this is 11 additional classrooms that would be full day, spread out between these or other locations as we refine where the pilot will be.
And all these campuses have capacity.
Correct.
For those extra.
Correct.
I just want to say thank you for spending all this time, doing so many things, you all board members, like Big Set, you know, spending time and explaining all that, and it's, it's helped.
I have, I have a few, few quick items. First of all, we're talking about the pilots, so that would put us in a position of doing both because we're not removing the half-day that we have, we're just expanding to those who prefer the full day or?
The current thought would be at the pilot campuses, there will be only a full-day program.
Only a full day.
If a parent wanted a half-day program, they would have the option to switch to a neighboring or start at a neighboring campus in a half-day. So the pilot campuses will be exclusively full-day. We don't feel like there would be a lot of that, but we are interested to see if that's one of the things that comes out of piloting is that we have parents that prefer a half-day program.
So if it's successful, then, okay, I got you. I'm just looking at, for that 1920, we will be listed as a district of doing both.
Part of the, part of the survey results will help us guide that decision too, because I think we've got some, we've got some, you know, differing opinions about, from the professionals about, you know, if there's available, and what's available is what you fit into versus the choice factor of having both available and what the takers will be. We might not, we might be able to find out a good indication of that through the survey, but our intention is to survey before we go live with the full mix of, do we need to have one classroom remain a half-day program so that we can satisfy those?
The other thing was, this, with the thought of 2019, 20, 1920, that's gonna require marketing. I think we've gone through these steps so much, we know where's that marketing. So I know this Kimberly Smith already on logos, all of those things.
She's very much on it.
You've already created a boss for this. All right. So the other thing that I'm concerned with is the staffing. Is there gonna be a change in the staffing? Is there gonna be additional staffing? You know, we're talking about campuses that already have, like, the capacity for it. So does that mean that they already have, you know, teachers in place for it, or principals, have you had to top those principals yet?
Yes, the principals of all that contact don't have this week.
If they have staff, they don't have enough staff. So it would be adding staff.
So that's where the cost.
Existing staff, instead of having 36 kids through the day or whatever, having two classes, they would have 20.
22.
22.
Max of.
All day long. And every one of them will want to do that.
Right, and then with parents to bring the ratio down to 11.
So that means more feeding the students at those campuses as well as nutrition and all of that. So I just want to kind of visualize what that's gonna look like. I'm not afraid of the thought, I support this. I mean, from the moment that the, the community went forth with the bond election and said that that's what they wanted, I'm glad that we have this process in place because this is something, I'm pretty sure those people who were there for the bond committee also are still just as much involved in this as well. Just saying, at this point now, that it's kind of in the board's hands, we kind of decide, I'd like to talk about what that looks like as far as the staffing, because we want to be very sure that people not, you know, losing jobs or people who are being moved out of one position to satisfying being in pre-K. One of the things that I am assured about for the last two years, I know that you guys have been working on the curriculum, we wanted to make sure that we set the standard for the state. Because the state, you know, wasn't quite sure on whether or not pre-K would be beneficial or show that there's evidence that the children are gonna be successful. I think that ALEAF has done a great job already, seeing we are doing that. How I know that, because of the other centers that are in this community who is sitting there with these nice food stores, I think it's something that they're star-rated, that they're using the curriculum that we've gone out and we introduced to them. So, you know, we're putting forth a great effort to make sure that when they come to us, that they are as ready as possible. So I like this idea, but I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, talk about that. The curriculum, I'm not worried about because I know that's in capable hands, we've been working at that long enough. The staffing is, is one of the things that would be, you know, a conversation, where are these individuals gonna come from? Because pre-K, this is not daycare, this is pre-K, what a curriculum. So we know that we have hot, hot toasts, right? That, that we're looking forward to have that mindset. It's gonna take a different mindset, it's not first grade, second grade mindset, it's a different one. So that's, that's one of my things that I'll kind of be looking at, what that staffing would look like, and that's why I was.
Elizabeth is also.
Elizabeth, you're already on.
And been involved in all these discussions.
All right, so with that, that's also things I want to. All right, so with that, that's also things I wanted to bring up.
I guess that maybe it draws logistic sense, is I know with these five campuses, once the campaign goes out and information goes out, we have so many apartments and people move because of less rent, but people may move to those areas because of the school. So there's a way to move into this, by the apartment complex for that area. You know, if it's saturated, there's no ones that really move in, then we're gonna make sure there's just gonna be those students from that zone to that school. Does that make sense? Because now we're gonna have people moving around the district, trying to get into the five boundaries to get into a pre-K. And that makes that four-hundred-and-sixty number up to...
Yeah, we could easily...
Go over a thousand.
I could easily produce a list for the marketing and prep work to get that out.
So if it potentially get more than, more response than we have really spaced for, even at this current growth, then we're gonna go to waiting lists and...
And offer a half-day program in other campuses.
Just like we do now, so they can go on to the waiting list of...
Here we go, one side, and we deal with the management program, they have to go and apply that patient, go through that process, you know, first come, first served type thing. I just want to make sure that verbiage, if we put that on.
But first come, first served after the campus in which you live in is first served. In other words, they get first shot at the seats.
My own experience, I have a pre-K child that's one of pre-K, and I'm like, oh, it's open there. I'm moving in July, or June, or whether the deadline is, and move into that neighborhood, may pay fifteen dollars more a month in rent. Which, you know, I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna pay child there.
Well, similar to kindergarten and first grade, if enrollment of students that are zoned to that campus exceeds what we planned for, then we have to add teachers when school starts.
Yeah, we'll just have to meet it. I mean, at that point, we'd rather project what shows up in incoming zone, not counting the surroundings, just with incomings, then that just will be an increase.
And you know this, if the apartments are saturated, there's no space to move into that zoning area.
Dehugage that.
You know, dehugage and stuff.
But that's the best news that we can get from this pilot.
Right.
That just really just says, okay, this is what we're gonna be missing.
So it's towards for a design, so to speak. I'm looking at classrooms from portable, so we're not moving students. I'm looking at your capacity analysis.
That was information only, that last column. So when we're showing capacity available at various campuses, if you look at the first ones, Ewens, shows that right now they have five less classrooms than what they need. So when I first put that on, I'm like, well, everybody's gonna look at that and say, where are all those kids at Ewens? Well, we do have twelve portable classrooms at that campus. So everywhere we're currently, we have over capacity, we do have portable buildings in place. And we would not be planning for putting pre-K students in portable buildings.
Right, and I was just thinking about some of the facilities that we've already, like, I don't know if all of them are that way. I remember being at Kennedy many years ago, and the Kinder was all up front down there in a building in the back to itself. So if you're thinking about doing that for a pre-K all-day, have you ever, you know, I'm just saying, that design, what is that design space that keeps the Kinder in its place, the elementarys in that place, and the pre-Ks? Even though the buildings are there, capacity is available?
We would have to look at that campus by campus for each of the models. To make sure that that before.
Yeah, please, please do look at that. We're talking about the nineteen-twenty school year, you know what that's gonna mean? That's gonna mean booting some teacher out of a location that they love so dearly. So we need to, you know, be honest.
Yeah, and there is not, there's no possible way to do any kind of facility modifications that require like additional restrooms and things like that. This is working within the building structure that's there now, and arranging of classrooms, just like you're saying. Had that discussion earlier, the principals will. I want to also bring up that, you know, the second phase of this is looking at what facilities we would do long-term and recommendations coming from that. And I just want to put the plug in your ear that also, since Harvey, the requirements for building inside the city limits and within the county limits, so to say, the counties, are so increased as far as height of floors and detention and so forth, that putting in a high classroom addition on every single elementary school is just not affordable. Not with what we planned for. So it will take an efficient use of the dollars that we have on reverend and the design of what we end up with, utilizing our existing facilities to their fullest. So that's what we're, that's why this pilot also means a lot more is to see how it's reacted to an actual enrollment with our folks and our kids.
I'm excited to see what that looks like. I want to make it a tour of a pre-K wing.
That question that you talked about, teachers being displaced from a room that they loved for a long time. I mean, that's a possibility, and they'll have to have honest conversations with the teachers about that, because what you don't want to happen, and what some concerns have been raised in the meetings, is that you don't want a pre-K room on this screen, and then another pre-K room. I need to be there.
And just as an elder, a former elder principal, that happens every year as grade levels grow. So teachers fully expect, and sometimes they may have to make adjustments with their rooms because of growth of a grade level, so it's not unusual, it's very common. And it's handled very gently, because we understand it.
So also let me apologize, because I do not want to underestimate our teachers. They're very professional, I do know that, and I appreciate that about them. But you guys always know that I'm always concerned about them being a participant, not just, you know, you know, we're gonna tell you what you have to do, and that's all it is to it. You know, I think that the campus is gonna get great benefits when everyone lies into this idea that they have been chosen to participate in this program. So I don't mean to be native about what a teacher would think, but I'm always conscious about, you know, their reactions to change.
And we have some great pre-K teachers on the task force also, that have been very, very vocal in talking about pros and cons and what real life is like teaching them pre-K programs. It's been really good to hear from them.
So I have a question, is how the work that you're already doing in the early childhood, the name of the early childhood centers? Is this gonna impact that at all, and possibly because of the work that you've been doing in some?
Well, that are pre-K experts you're dealing with, perhaps respond to that. Because we were talking about that this morning. Talk about the public-private partnerships. Here's the short answer to it, it's not gonna happen. When this is all said, none of us are under any illusion that every adult or four-year-old can be in a private school.
Because parents never have thoughts.
I mean, there are some programs out there that parents have this way, we know. But however, one of the legs of that stool, we have a bunch here, we have some in private here. So we're gonna continue to have to work with those, not ever, whoever's on there, whoever's managing. In terms of how we're gonna work with them, we're not gonna be just quite blunt. This is, it won't be as big a light of the wheel as it would be in other areas where there's a lot of chained-type pre-K facilities, because this is gonna be more political issue, particularly if the state of Texas begins to bump for the pre-K, and we could call this conversation. They're a very organized lobby, you know, the kids' arrest groups and the law services and some of the other programs. So in some areas, it's gonna cut into their bottom line. And it'll happen later. I just don't know that the bottom line is really cutting into it, to be quite frank with you. I'm not really worried about that, because those kids might be able to quality instructions. I'm not, it's just an issue we have to deal with. As a board member, we think, when this becomes public and we go full, you know, full oral listening, I would fully expect someone who starts losing clients, if you will, to us.
Their teachers. Well, and even with the full-day program, there's still opportunities for the daycare providers for after-school care potentially.
Yeah, I'm just, what I'm saying is to your question about, there's still gonna have to be a partnership at some level, some way, somehow, because that's gonna be a portion of our kids who are still gonna be in kindergarten. We can't ignore that. I'm just saying it's gonna be, I think some discussions are gonna be pretty...
That will make the adjustments, as you're saying, some of these, some of the facilities are offering kindergarten. But one of the benefits that I've been hearing in the community, and I've heard from at least, I would say, three facilities, that they are excited about working with ALEAF. They brag when they, when parents come to view their facilities. You know, I've had close friends say, I was told that this center had a new store because they do work with ALEAF, what are you guys doing with ALEAF? And I'm thinking, it's gotta be this program, you know. At the same time, what it allows them to do is their financial pieces as well, because they are now able to say that we do more than just make a sit. We have something to offer when your students leave, when your child leaves from this facility, you know, that they are ready to enter kindergarten.
I understand that, but I also agree that when these facilities moves ten or fifteen students, and it's the bottom line, they're gonna have those conversations.
Absolutely.
And, you know, it's like the charter schools, the charter schools, they know that they're not getting education like we're providing in our older classrooms, but they don't want to have that conversation with those students, because they don't want to lose that revenue.
But just think about it, ALEAF didn't always do pre-K either, so that was a transition at that time.
Or even full-day Kinder.
Or full-days Kinder, so it's always gonna be a conversation. I mean, that's what we want to do, we want to see education evolve to a level, but at the end of the day, this is not about bottom lines and money. This is about children coming in and being on a solid foundation. And that is something that this board, Ms. Moreno, we've talked about. This is something we've been talking about for six years. So we're excited now to know that we have a plan in place. We got to buy in from the community to do this. And that is why I appreciated the effort, extra effort that we went through to make those facilities, to become partners with the district, to not see us as someone that was taken from them, but supporting them.
I wanted to say two more things. Another topic that came up, which I want to leave in the back of your mind, is we're talking about pre-K eligible students that we can give funding dollars, but we also have pre-K students that aren't eligible under those criteria. And one of the things that we discussed was a tuition-based allotment for those kids that would choose to come to ALEAF. And, you know, one of the reasons for that is I've got a third grader, and I've got a pre-K student that really is, really, really has a opportunity. And also, like, I don't really wanna say, oh, this is ALEAF right now. ALEAF has stepped out and does what's right for kids, even if the state is dragging their heels on doing what they need to do financially, and they must do what's right for kids.
Great job, great presentation.
And we'll be back in December.
So our plan, our plan is to, if there's any question, we'll bring it to you in December as a formal recommendation, and any changes, which I would expect it to, if any changes would be in touch with you about that.
And I'd like included what additional support the pre-K team is gonna have to give.
Mari will make that real clear.
She says she can do it all, would help.
And of course, guys, if there's some question or something that you heard at the table, that feel free to send the information to the superintendent, so that he can pass it on to us in board notes. I know typically we have questions, or something comes up in your mind that did not get addressed, you can fully address it, and we look forward to seeing it in board notes prime to...
And just one last thing, this, the task force work is only about a third of it. The plan is to really bring the work to you guys, and maybe worry if it gets retrieved for sure. So there's a whole lot of work to do, it's much bigger than just this power. We're gonna learn a lot from the survey, and a lot from what it looks to you, and also who you guess.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to item number twelve. Eleven? Oh, thank you, I saw my name on this last one. Item number eleven, okay. And I think I'm gonna need Ms. Woods' help on just item number eleven. Discussion on any board meeting broadcast. So there was a number of things that, questions that the board wanted to ask. Regarding, regarding this, do you have some information you want to share with us first, Ms. Woods?
Yes, board, back in two thousand sixteen, in the eighty-fourth legislative session, House Bill two-eighty-three, I'm going off of a rope, because I can't move a paper around. House Bill two-eighty-three was passed and it changed government code five-fifty-one, I think it's one-twenty-eight, added a section B-one. And basically what it said was that districts of greater than or equal to ten thousand students had to videotape their board meetings and, of course, video record, not tape, video record their board meetings along with audio. And of course, we've been doing that for years, but what the other part was, is that it had to be posted on the internet in a conspicuous spot and maintained within seven days of the meeting, on all regular meetings, and any workshops or non-regular meetings in which actions, votes can be taken. And that began January of two thousand sixteen, is when the effective date was. So at the time, we had been already recording the audio portion of the video of the board meetings, and we had, but as soon as we opened this board room in two thousand six, we had a camera installed up there and had been recording it for perpetuity along with an audio recording. Well, we just changed that process at that time, and Gerard started making the booth over there and recording the meetings and putting it on our internal video server that we use for video, housing all kinds of video. And we built it into a website query on the board page that the video would be posted there, and everybody on the outside would have access to those videos that happened, login or identify who you are or anything, it's just open to the vote. Along with the agenda documents, so there's a nice handy tidy little spot, and then board briefs, which are done by the PR department after board meetings also, which kind of summarize what happened in the board meeting, kind of like minutes. So that's been out there since January of two thousand sixteen when it was required. And I think we average somewhere around like twenty-nine, thirty hits per video that's out there.
And that's what people would take, I mean, if one person wants it five times, that's five hits.
That's correct. And, you know, there may be something that happened, you know, in past years that was a big idea that people wanted, for instance, when we had a late arrival of selecting a principal, you know, late in the year, and the staff didn't get to find out before they went on to the summer, well, they're here to find out, or something like that. Might have caused a lot of people remotely in the summertime to sign on. Things that, that's where we had some peaks during the summer months. But typically, it's less than thirty. Now, you add to that the fact that the video is, what, two and a half, three hours long? You know, there's not a whole lot of people that are that interested in that much talk. They have specific ideas of what they want to hear or listen to, or see in the video, unless you're just really a ruckus crowd and it's just entertaining. So what some districts have done is they've gone to a third-party indexing service to try and link agenda items to points in the video or bookmarks, so you can jump right to the spot where that item starts talking about it. So I'm interested in administrators, click on that, and the video would jump to that spot, so you wouldn't have to kind of scan and find out where it was. So I got some quotes from a service that does it for some neighboring districts, to just get the idea, because right now... because right now Gerard is just part of his other duties as assigned, uh, to come sit in here and record the video, and then he usually, within a day, posts it on the website. We have seven days legally to do it, unless there's a technical difficulty of some sort. Of course, this is without any public information request. It used to be, you wanted any of that recording, you had to put in public information request. That's no longer there anymore. The, the video is available to anybody regardless of, of you're human or not, because it's coming in from a technology HTTP request. So, bottom line is, we're, we're, we're well within the, the intent and spirit of the law. There is all kinds of additions and enhancements that can be made to that, from streaming live, whether it's using services like, these services like YouTube, Facebook, and everything else, to, uh, which is pandering to, to a group maybe that's not in the room at the time, to, um, enhancing the indexing of the videos and, and actually trying to put transcripts to the words that were spoken so it's searchable. And there's lots of variations of what's happening all over the United States, not only in school districts, but in county, states, government, for transparency purposes. All that costs money. So, it's just, what else do we, do you all want to do? We are well with, you all are well within the law. The, the board policy, the statute that had was passed. Um, so if you wanna go farther, it's up to you, and we can, we can go research other services and features available. One thing is clear, though, is in the video, they want it to be, um, legible or not, not just garbage. So, so when I say YouTube, Facebook, that's not to say that that's a, a real solution, because you have to try to have, make sure you have a never complase. You're not gonna have constant technical difficulties, or, or then you're really not complying, you know, so...
Oh, yeah, and you're not in control of those particular entities as well, so.
Ms. Woods, I know, um...
You have to maintain it for two years. We've, we've already got three years out.
No, that's okay. I know when we had this discussion, um, was brought up in, um, the last meeting by a, a resident that brought this information to us and requesting us to consider and look at it, which we have been talking about over the years. I know in the past, we've, um, living here, I've been here, we've, we've looked at broadcasting, maybe in a campus, in cases of group, maybe like a table, they can go there, not have to be remotely, layers have to come in here. Since there's never a seat open, um, in the board meetings, as you can obviously tell by today, um, this is a typical board, uh, meeting of a amount of people that remain to the end of the meeting.
We can handle, but, but, not to interrupt, not to interrupt.
You can handle that.
We can handle multiple, multicast, many campuses at once, internal in our network, no problem.
Right, and, and we do that with the graduation, you know, with the graduation and so forth. Um, so I just know that, you know, when we, um, and I, Charles, you had mentioned, but you didn't really go to the dollar amount. I know you provided some information about what that cost would be. It's about seven hundred fifty dollars a month, or nine to ten thousand dollars a year to, to do that reporting. But, um, and I don't know, um, and I was hoping that that resident was here tonight, so we could get more information, but we didn't, um... I'm not really clear from my understanding, and I've seen some of the districts...
They don't put somebody in your room.
No, no, no. I, I know neighboring districts have, and I've seen on, on Facebook and so forth, and it's a video posting, and, and people from the community are chiming in and going, "Oh, I can't believe they're saying that," or, "He's a liar," or, "He's telling the truth," or, "Yay, teacher," or whatever, having those remarks, um, but then you can't respond back to them. So, again, you know, don't really know what's going out there and, and representing ALEAF. So, what we're talking about here is only strictly video going out, and there's no interaction from the community to the videos.
You, no, you can do, you can do all that.
On that, those sites?
Yeah, maybe not that one.
That one does. Right, I know there are a lot of options. But I'm just saying that if we have a, over the years, we haven't had that much of a response to come into the meetings. Um, we've had people that come and present, um, residents present, long-term residents present, that, you know, about the meetings and wanting this or wanting that, um, where they're not getting information, but halfway, and I'm just being honest, this is a, a meeting of the boards. We're talking, this is a board that they leave. They leave halfway through the meeting. Um, and I'm not resenting that. I'm just saying that's just not a, a good thing to do. They leave the meeting, don't hear the rest of the reports being put out by the, by our departments, some good reports, and they leave. But now they can go home in the good comments of their own house, pull videos up, revisit it, relook at it. But if we're only getting twenty-nine a month, and then that...
That's twenty-five dollars per person per month, that's seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that's really happening to do that. So, you know, and, and my, um, I'm just speaking again for myself. I would not favor changing or increasing unless we got an influx of community members. Some stating say, "This is what we want. This is it." We had one individual say this, that, that did this, and made comments, "Well, if we don't do this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay to walk out on students," which I think is wrong for students, because they don't even miss education. It's a tough, tough fight. I've been, I've missed a couple of days. Some of them may not graduate if they miss those days. And then secondly, is to deal with our business partners and tell them, "Oh, don't do business with ALEAF because they choose not to stream their videos," which again, is not, is not good for the business. It's gonna cost us more to go out and find new vendors, pay more, and cost the district and taxpayer more money. So, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I requested this to come out as an agenda item, so we can discuss this. Um, I'm not personally in favor of changing it. I think Gerard's done a great job. We're getting the videos, and, um, you know, it's enough that's out there. We, actually, in fact, today, we have a, a resident videotaping, and we've had almost every board meeting in the last several years, somebody has been in here videotaping and posting it on whatever social media site they choose. And it's okay, and we allow that, and there's no, there's no restrictions to that. So, I don't really see why we would spend extra money for taxpayers to do something that's satisfactory. But, anyway, I'll get off my soapbox. I'm gonna let y'all.
Well, I agree with, um, Mr. Moreno, because with me, you know, and I, we are videotaping. We have the minutes. We have every single thing. And if people are interested in it, they can sit in the floor, you know, listen to the whole entire meeting, go home, and, you know, the next stage, you know, look at it. Because to me, I'd rather use the money for education for the kids, like we just talked about, pre-K and all that, because it's more attractive than, you know, you spend nine or ten thousand dollars a year to spend on live stream and things like that. I mean, to me, I'd rather not have to, because it costs more for the district, and like he said, for the taxpayer, and it's, the money doesn't spend correctly. So, I'd rather that money shift to pre-K, to program for the kid, or special education or something, rather than live streaming video, or put in some, you know, like, we said something about the segment, you know, like certain things to look into. I mean, if really somebody interested in, sit there and watch the entire thing, you know? You don't, you don't need to go in just that, or you can forward it or something. Yeah, so that's my opinion.
Anything else?
And final, one last thing, one final. I forgot to put this. Final, our public relations department does a great job. Back in the day, when they ran out of their phones and, and these big phones and good social media, I promise, I mean, we know five minutes after a meeting that a raise is given. That's on, that's on Twitter, that's Instagram, that's, that's classing out there. You know, I think they're waiting for that button, ready to push that button. They, they just ready to, to go. So, we get all that information. They get that information before we walk out of the store in the evening, so...
Well, what I, the only thing that I wanted to add to that is that this board is a very transparent board. Um, I think back when the decision came up, uh, when, when, um, House Bill two eighty-three came about, the board that was impressed, uh, was present then, was a thoughtful board. No one resisted the thought. No one said, "Oh, my God." You know, we know in many other districts, in, in this video, you have board members grandstanding. None of, none of the board members here was afraid of being video recorded or that being posted to the public. We worked very hard to be a presentable, productive board. So, it was kind of disappointing to me, um, not to have a, um, a resident to come and say that, but a resident that has had a relationship with this board, and not all of you, I know with me. So, it was the first of my hearing that someone had disclipped with that thought. So, I was really hoping that they had came back. I was hoping within the time that they announced what that they would do, that they would have reached out to someone who has always been in partnership with them. So, it's, that's disappointing to me, but at, uh, bringing it back down to what it is, when the board came about and they said that they would be committed to doing what the law said that we needed to do, there was no resistance to that. The only question that came about was the quality. And of course, I'm just gonna put it out here, because it's gonna be from video. I care about how I look, and people typically don't get the right light from me, so I'm kind of dark on here. So, I was just gonna say that. But here's the other thing. We talked about the camera quality. I remember when you came, when you came to the proposal. We talked about the camera quality. We talked about the camera that we already had in the room. We talked about the fact that we wanted to be, um, quality enough that people would know who these individuals were. We also, um, did not push back when we got Gerard to come in to make sure that people who were presenting from a paper presentation could be well-reviewed as well. I think that we've, we've done a great deal and a great effort, and we don't do it just to, to grandstand. The whole point of it is to show transparency.
And multiple times, you, this board has facilitated video conferencing and in a board meeting, members who couldn't be present and making that fit within the statute of law to live.
But, and here's the other thing, and, uh, the last thing I wanna add, just because of my technology background and just seeing some of the things that's coming out of the market, I know that things are going to change. I don't think that there's a board member here to say that's no to the idea. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board is that we are doing everything to, to the extent of the law, and there's no, um, reservation on taking it further other than the fact that we don't know what's gonna happen financially with the legislative issue. We don't know. We don't know where that budget is going. So, it is, um, the job of a board to think consciously about where we spend those dollars. And if there had been even two hundred people who said, "Yes, I have a need to see this," and to state why, then, you know, there would have been some accommodations. I don't think to the extent of the cost that, that has been brought to our attention, but it would have been something more putting place. But to, as I say, if, if, and that was the first question, who's been asking, asking public relations? Have you guys gotten any, uh, public information? Have you guys gotten any feedback? Have you gotten anything? We have, um, let's talk on the websites and all those different areas where we have individuals who can communicate. And I know it exists, because at two in the morning, I'm out there saying, "Hey, where is this? I wanna see it." So, I wanted to know whether that existed, and the question came back, "Here's how we track it, and this is the numbers that we have." So, I think that it would be almost foolish at this point, when people are concerned about safety for their children, and we're worried about how we're going to educate all of the children that come to our front door. We're not turning anybody away. So, um, I would, you know, if a board member decides later that they want to do that, or if the community comes out and they, they, you know, this is not a, a district or a board that opposes the community. I think we're all ingrained here. We all live here, and we know what our neighbors are saying. So, if it's more than, if, if we're ignorant to that, then I'm gonna, gonna say, "Hey, come and talk with us. We're not someone that's resistant. Come and talk with us." And I'm not someone that, that people cannot approach. As a board president, I have never been that person that you cannot talk to about that. So, I was very disappointed that, uh, there was not a heads-up, I get a heads-up for so many other things. That was kind of shocking. So, the response that the board is giving is not one that's saying, "No, we won't do that." We're saying that we have done the research, and our end of the research says that it's not, it's not something that feasible financially to, to do, so...
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. Was, after the request at the, at the prior meeting, was there a follow-up meeting with that individual?
No, no.
Okay.
So, after that, since we've already done this many times before...
Sorry, I just, so that, that individual actually did come, and he met, um, Mr. Ikorn. Um, and his question actually, at that time, it was more clarified that he was under the impression that we did not broadcast our board meeting meetings at all. And, um, so we clarified for him that, in fact, we do broadcast. We do record them, and, um, we showed him the link so that he could see it. And he said, "Thank you very much for showing me. I was unaware." That was the end of the conversation.
I, I just wanted to make sure, or to, to, you know, for transparency, to say that we, that you all were open and willing to meet with the individual afterwards, and, and in fact, that did have to correct, all right, that's all.
He was in a meeting, being on another totally different issue. And after the meeting, I said, "Can we call?" Or didn't you wait to call? Which you, you probably remember, it's when you guys talked to him.
So, um, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Wood, for, um, Mr. Woods, for collecting the, uh, information on it. And as I said, this is not something that's, that we're saying no to. I wanna hope they stay. I think streaming is a good idea. As a matter of fact, most of you who know me in the superintendents around Texas know that I stream live my church services on Sunday, Facebook. And I like the fact that people click, that they like what I'm posting. But when we post something as, uh, serious as board meetings, where people are making decisions, there are some people who may not want to be streamed live. There, you know, we have had some comments about that. Some people who have decided that they don't wanna do a paper presentation just because they know that they're gonna be video recorded. So, we have to be conscious of signs, you know? Um, at the end of the day, as we say, this is a meeting of the board, and since it is that, when the state says that your board must do, we have complied with that. So, I want, we be there with you on that. Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay, on, uh, the next item that's on the agenda, that is our committees. And, um, Ms. Robey for, uh, the board, the board committee report. You have a report?
Yes, um...
Okay, so the policy and legislative committee did have a meeting, and we will be sending the minutes, um, to be included in board notes, um, uh, to be sent out in board notes for consideration for approval down next year.
All right. So, uh, I'm sorry. So, um, did you get the appropriate amount of feedback so that the, the board members would know? And, um, we said in previous meetings, uh, things like, um, board operating procedure, equity policy, guys. So, look forward to those items coming up, because it traveled was one, one of the things that, uh, the board members have brought up as well, so...
I can just let you know what was on our agenda, which was board travel, background checks, process for dissemination of information to the board by the board president, uh, equity policy update, um, and that was it. And the, and the agenda is posted outside, right outside the boardroom today, um, so...
Okay, so we look forward to that report, and again, board, if you have any thoughts or suggestions, now's a good time to start, um, filtering that out, because, you know, the years want to change pretty soon, so we wanna know exactly where we're going. You know, I think, kind of technically, Mr. Moreno, no matter the severity, comes like a year to the board. So, that's why if, if there's any changes or updates. And I'm sure, um, we wanna make sure that any changes to our, our procedures also being filtered to our board council.
Absolutely. That was actually one of the things that we discussed, and so people will be in contact.
All right, uh, Ms. Moreno, would you like to share? I know that, uh, our committee chair for the student tenant evaluation. Can you give, um, an, an update on how, uh, you believe the process went for?
The name process is, is went well. We haven't had a, just a, a separate meeting, but we did have a meeting of a review of, um, and we decided on the last student evaluation, we were gonna try to quarterly to review and see what we're doing. And then as a team of eight, and kind of worked out, and, and we did meet, I believe, uh, last week or before, maybe before. Uh, two weeks ago, I think it was. And, um, it went well. There was some good conversation. There was some, some new query, and I'm moving on from that. Um, not sure, uh, further plans, it, um, it's better has for future meetings, but I'm looking at her. There's no, there's never meeting, every report there for that.
Yeah, um, and make a note, too, I need to, um, ask Ms. Butler to make sure she sends a survey out to the board as to, um, um, how they felt about the evaluation process. Do they believe that the board... the board as a whole needs to continue to meet quarterly with the student intensive as a whole.
I'm sure she will watch the video tomorrow, so if you just peek into the camera, I'm sure she'll, she'll look at it and.
Okay, but just in case she doesn't get that.
I'll bet you'll do this, buddy.
Yeah, if she doesn't get that, we need to have a survey because considering we're got with this process of committees, you know, this has all been due for us, thank you so very much to you guys for making an anniversary with us, congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every year.
Yeah, it's a year, so.
Every day.
You've got three more, you're household.
Okay, so that concludes that information there, I'm going to ask the board, I know that we're right up on time, but I would like to ask the board, I have one item that I'd like to discuss in closed session. So I'm going to ask that the board go into closed session under section 551 dot zero seven one for the purpose of private consultation with attorney and any and all subject matters authorized by law, and the rest of you are dismissed while the board gets to stay behind. So thank you so very much. the videos, are you getting feedback from people, are you live streaming or are you posting them up like? I'm curious to know, that's all.
Is it a video?
No, no, because I mean, like when I do, when I video things and I post it up on Facebook there, you can't respond to.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's fine.
No, no, I'm just saying, I was asking, is your video, are you able to live stream your video?
I can, yeah.
I didn't know for a fact, so I just thought I would check, but I wouldn't dare ask you across the table like that, thank you.
You're welcome.
How's this one doing?
He's doing good.
Cool, I saw him on the internet, one of the audio piece for the committee.
Yeah, he's the president.
Come on, everybody. All right, come on. Something like you, just out of town, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there you go.
I don't want to send you a couple of emails, too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good night.
That's okay, I'm like, mine is time to pick up everything.
No, wait, I got it.
And I gotta get stuff out of your box, too.
Okay.
Put the time down, see if we can read the board reconvene. All right. All right, and no action taken, 10:54, board adjourned. Thank you, guys.